Okay, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, welcome. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. This is Tuesday, May 15th, 2018, and this is the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Seeing as all our attendants, we have a quorum, and I'll call the meeting to order. At this point, could I ask for a moment of silence? Thank you. Please rise, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the nation under government, in the vision of liberty, justice, and freedom.
Okay. Okay, thanks. At this point, I'd kind of like to get a show of hands so we can arrange the meeting here. We may shift items on the agenda depending on the attendance here. Okay, just a second. Just a second. So, could I see, you know, who's here for the different items? Could I see who might be here for the height limitation, for the Module 2? See a show of hands of that? Okay. Could I ask for a show of hands on who's here for the vacation rentals? Okay. And then also on the use, Module 3, the use standards? Okay? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So I think what we'll do as we get going here, we'll shift the agenda around so that the majority of you'll have a chance to speak earlier. So to be more comfortable for everything, we can get rolling. So first, we'll have Planning Commissioner comments. Do we have?
Yeah. This Saturday, May 19th, Coast Alliance will be hosting the Hands Across the Sands from 12 noon to 12:15 on the beach, on the north side of the rock by the parking lot, to show support for love for the oceans. It's a global event, this Hands Across the Sands issue, and they post it all over social media, and you'll have it from all over the world. So there'll be somebody taking pictures of the Hands Across the Sands. So if you're not doing anything Saturday around noon, show up and hold somebody's hand that's new.
Okay. Anybody else that has any announcements? Okay, great. Can we go into staff report for vacation rental?
Sure. So I think before we do that, you know, you want to have regular general public comments for items that are not on the agenda. But before we do that, I think how we'll do this because we're sort of rearranging the way that the presentation was put together.
Correct.
I mean, we don't have a presentation specifically for vacation rentals. We have a presentation for Module 3, which is all the use regulations. But I think we should talk about vacation rentals separately, so we can do that. And as we pull out each one of these items and talk about them separately, I think we'll take individual public comment for each one of those. That's probably the best way to do it. So that when we'll do the presentation first, Planning Commissioners' comments, public comments, they get to hear what the presentation is, they get to hear what the questions are for the Planning Commission, and then we'll close the public comment, and then it'll go back to deliberations for the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And we'll do that for each of the, you know, for the three basic items that we have on here, which is vacation rentals, Module 2, height in the downtown, and then Module 3, which is the use regulations. But we should have a regular public comment period for items not on the agenda.
Okay. So if there's any member of the audience that would like to speak to items not on the agenda, then please come forward now. I would request that if you do come forward, if you have to leave and you do come forward and speak to an item on the agenda, we'll respectfully not allow you to speak to that item later. So please, if you have something, if you have an item that's not on the agenda, please come forward.
Really quick, only half a page. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Could you please pull the microphone down to you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. My name is Rigmore, resident of Morro Bay. It was hard for me to assimilate all those drafts, so I will just mention one thing that stuck out for me. On the map showing the new proposed designated areas for visitor-serving mixed use, it was brown colors on the map with dots overlay. I totally agree that all that area above the bluff and a few blocks in should be an area in the future designated visitor-serving. But that a couple of blocks here, south of the vetsal, between Beach and Surf, not was included, I think is wrong. That area is definitely ripe for some future changes to highest and best use. And looking at the visitor traffic that rolls down Beach and Surf Street, that square between Western Market, Beach, and Surf should be included in the brown color with dots overlay. I think you should look thoroughly at that. Regarding heights in Morro Bay, my opinion is 25 feet, definitely nothing higher than 30. When it comes to vacation rentals, I'm mostly interested in some renting a room in their home where I think there should not be any. Paul can do it, but Peter cannot. I do not like that kind of choosing, and I really do not think there's any reason to restrict anyone who might want to do an Airbnb or some other way to rent out a room short term. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For items not on the agenda, please.
Good afternoon, Bill Martini. Yeah, I was actually going to ask, on harbor zoning, is that on the agenda tonight? Because I was going to speak. If it is, then I'll wait until later.
Okay. It's on the agenda. Depending on our time constraints, we may or may not get to that. If we don't get to it tonight, we'll postpone it, and we'll bring it to the next meeting.
I mean, if need be, I can speak on it now. If it's a potential of not being on the agenda tonight, I can, you know, I can forego it later on and talk about the harbor zoning now, or I can hold off.
Why don't you go ahead and, you know, go ahead and speak now in case it runs really late.
That's what I was thinking, and if you postpone it.
Okay.
As far as the actual harbor zoning in Morro Bay, I know in the past I spoke against about Special Planning Area B, which is south of the boat launch, the residential area. Out in front of Special Planning Area B in the harbor, it's special zoning called mixed harbor zoning. It only states it's for recreational fishing and boating, and that commercial fishing should be at the northern end of the harbor. I know that's being changed, I believe, or suggested that the entire harbor is pretty much carte blanche for industrial, commercial fishing, et cetera. And in the past, it's always been the northern end of the bay is where the commercial industrial fishing has, you know, they have designated that area. In the actual 70s, Orville League, the previous owner of the property that we own, the old Cannery property, had a marina for commercial fishing out in front, approved by the coastal. The condition was, in 18 months, they had to move that to the northern part of the bay. Ridiculous condition, but basically, the coastal is saying, you can put it here temporary, but we want commercial, new commercial fishing at the northern end. I think my main concern is I've heard that the city is going to be chasing windmills as far as the offshore. And any support, I believe, should be designated in the northern end of the bay, where the southern end should be restricted to recreational fishing and boating, like it is states currently in Measure B. And Special Planning Area B. That's Esha down in that part of the bay. It's kind of the quiet back part of the bay, where the northern part of the bay is closer to the harbor mouth for going in and out. And so rather than changing that, I think I'm just bringing to your attention that that part of the harbor has always been more for the recreational, and recreational boating and fishing. In fact, and I'm repeating myself, the tugs were down by the inn at Morro Bay, and they required them to move north. And this was even back in the late 60s. So just to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay. At this point, I'll bring it back to the commission. And Scott, do you have a presentation, or can you?
I mean, we have a couple of slides. Let me just look over what the...
And just to open it up, short-term...
Microphone, please.
Thank you. Short-term vacation rentals are defined the same as in your, currently defined in your Title V, which is the rental of any structure or portion of any structure for occupancy, for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping for less than 30 consecutive calendar days. So it includes both if you're renting out the entire structure or a room within it. So just to clarify, that was a point of discussion when we met with the G-PAC on it. But as far as the draft standards included in Module 3, require a 200-foot separation between short-term rentals in residential districts. There isn't that same separation requirement in the non-residential districts where they're also allowed. They are not allowed in accessory dwelling units, except some provisions to cover existing legal non-conforming vacation rentals. They are required to provide parking for that residential use as well as the short-term vacation rental. The number of tenancies would be limited to four individual tenancies per calendar month. And then the number of tenants is limited to those that can be accommodated by the onsite parking that's provided, and in no case shall exceed two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons. There is no transfer of the vacation rental permit upon the sale of a property, and this was one of the discussions at G-PAC as well. So originally, as drafted, it allowed that transfer upon the sale of property, but after that discussion, that was revised to not allow that. And then we also have, so at the G-PAC, there was a discussion on, you know, what, how much buffer should there be? Is 200 enough? Should it be a little bit more, less, so on? So staff had prepared this map showing the existing vacation rentals with a 200-foot buffer around it to give an idea of what that would mean. So that concludes kind of that summary or introduction unless staff has something to add.
I was just, I actually made the comment when I saw that map, I came out really fuzzy there. Sorry about that. But it does show all of the vacation, I think there's out of the 250, there's 248 of them mapped. There's a couple of them that aren't mapped on there because we didn't have the address in our parcel database, and so we're working on fixing that. We found where they are, we just didn't, by the time of preparation of this map, we didn't have them. So we do, but this shows, you know, where they exist today. What you would take away from that is, where you just start separating them by 200 feet, it would probably, you know, if you separated that not equally, it would be filling up the entirety of the city. So the capacity, based on the policies that are here now, are at approximately that 250 range, or maybe less even.
Okay.
In the residential zone, sorry.
Right. This is just in the residential zone. Now, is this, okay, is this R1, R2?
Yeah, R3 and R4. All the residential zones. So R4 does allow for hotel motel type use?
Okay.
Which is now not R4.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Do we have questions for staff?
I just wondered, when I did my own homework on this, I was seeing a huge range of numbers show up as to the capacity of the different types of units. And it seemed like the vast majority of them are the 2 to 4 kind of holding capacity. But then you get quite a few that are up there, 8, 12, 14. And there's no differentiation in the code between the nature of someone renting out a room to two people versus a whole house for 14 at this point, right? The draft doesn't discern any difference between those.
Correct. Right.
Is this just specific to vacation rentals?
Yes. Okay. Okay, I think I'll hold my questions till afterwards so we can open public comment at this time for this item?
I thought this was, so are we talking about the whole thing? Because I would like to make a statement and ask a question, okay?
So... We're talking about the vacation rentals. Were you talking about Module 3?
Well, we're talking about Module 3. We're talking about everything. So this is all part of it. Let me just make, it won't be long. "We could all agree that the diminution of public participation leads to the reduction in the quality of life for our citizenry. I would like to begin with the invocation. The Planning Commission is a legislative political body. We are entrusted with the legislative task of establishing rules, regulations, and parameters for development and activities. The matter before us today will have intergenerational effects. That said, I believe that the matter before us today needs proper noticing as a public notice in a public hearing." I would like to have that written into the record, and I got a copy for you, Scott, so you can put it in there at this time. Thanks.
Did you have a question on that?
Yeah. Why isn't this a public hearing but a business item?
It's not required to be a public hearing. So we go through the public hearing process when we're getting ready to adopt documents. And so once we're done through the process of putting the sections of the zoning together, we'll coalesce them, bring them back into a singular document, and then bring them back before the General Plan Advisory Committee for a final review, and then to the Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission will be asked to make a recommendation to City Council. So when we go through the process of getting into that track where we're going to be going for authorization or approval of the zoning code, we'll be coming back here with the noticing that goes out with that, and we'll be asking the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the City Council on the finalized document. And then it'll be a public hearing when we go to council following that. And if it takes, you know, it might be multiple meetings where the public hearing would be continued or something like that. So that's how the process typically works. Right now, we're developing the policy language, and these are more sort of working meetings that we're having at this point.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open up the floor to public comment on the item in Module 3 for the vacation rentals. So please come forward, state your name. We'll keep the comment to no more than three minutes. If you feel comfortable, you can go ahead and line up, or you can come up the next available slot.
My name is Pat Reed, and my husband and I have lived on Bernardo Street for 17 years. Since moving to Morro Bay, we've seen drastic changes in our neighborhood, as well as other single-family neighborhoods in the city. For two years, we've sent letters to the City Council asking that something be done about the proliferation of vacation rentals, licensed and otherwise, and have been told to wait for the general plan update, and that until that plan was in place, a cap of 250 licenses would be issued. Now that the plan may finally actually happen, we have sent a letter to the Planning Commission and the Planning Department outlining several important points that should be considered, starting with the high total number of licenses issued, which places an especially heavy burden on single-family neighborhoods, at many times virtually turning them into motel zones. There are numerous cities up and down the coast which have creatively addressed this issue. Santa Cruz has a new cap of 450 in a population, a city with a population of 65,000 people, six times that of Morro Bay. Based on that ratio, Morro Bay should have a cap of more, right, 100. Carpenteria has roughly the same population as Morro Bay and has a cap of 218, with the vacation rental overlay map indicating different caps in four different zones, none of which are in single-family neighborhoods. Santa Barbara considers vacation rentals in the category of hotels, motels, and hostels, and treats them as such in their zoning. Other cities are strict about spacing, low minimal turnovers, or limiting the total number of days a year that they can be rented. I realize there are many things to be considered in making zoning restrictions, and that the Coastal Commission needs to be included in those considerations. Morro Bay is a city, according to the study done on cities along the coastal zone, that is the most affordable for tourists of any city from Cambria to Avalon, and an important part of the Coastal Commission's mission. We need to bear in mind that tourism plays a crucial role in Morro Bay economy, but while taxes on the vacation rentals are a boon to the city's treasury, those dollars they bring in should not be at the expense of our permanent residents, or those who work here and would like to live here but can't find available rental housing. We realize the appeal for many out-of-town buyers to buy a house in Morro Bay as an investment and set up a vacation rental only exacerbates the problem. We know that taking into account the many issues that should be considered in any city plan will create extra work for the city planners. There is one size, there's no one-size-fits-all when it comes to this issue, but it's important to get it right and not make a mockery of any zoning plan, especially allowing the status quo to exist by letting existing vacation-licensed rentals to continue to operate that would otherwise be in violation of any rules outlined in the new general plan. Hopefully, you will come up with a plan that is fair and equitable to all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you for the technical aspect that you're considering and making your recommendations. I'm here to voice more of a personal perspective on the issue of short-term vacation rentals. But again, thank you for inviting public comment too on this issue. I would like to draw attention to the perspective of our families with children. When a nearby house is used as a short-term vacation rental, by definition, it is subject to constant turnover of occupants with whom we have no acquaintance. We must therefore provide direct, constant supervision of our children at all times when they are outside. Due to increased traffic and other concerns, we cannot allow our children to walk up and down the street freely. The restriction placed on these families and children is significant. I want to live in a community that welcomes and accommodates families with children. Other cities have faced this dilemma. Regulations on licensing, density, proximity of short-term rentals to each other, parking requirements, no ways, and code enforcement, along with fines to maintain compliance with the city's regulation, have been found to promote appreciable balance. We wholeheartedly welcome tourists to Morro Bay. We enjoy having visitors to our beautiful coastline community and to our local establishments. Tourists bring in valuable business to our local economy. Residents and tourists can certainly coexist here, just not in our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't get your name.
Yeah, could you please say your name?
My name is Carol Swain.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I live in Morro Bay.
Next, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Patrick Vaughn. I live at 3008 Beachcomber Drive. I also had the great honor of serving this community as one of the physicians for 34 years. And that's, the note I want to make about that is, when I came here, I was able to find long-term rental housing to use and live in Morro Bay. If I had to live somewhere else, it's possible I might have practiced somewhere else. We are seeing short-term vacation rental push out long-term vacation rentals. Speaking about short-term vacation rentals in my own neighborhood, which is Beachcomber, if you look at the south end of Beachcomber, from Sienna, past Easter Street, 1,000 feet perhaps, 28 houses, nine of those houses are presently vacation rentals, a 10th is on the waiting list and is number two. That is approximately a 30% density of vacation, short-term vacation rentals on that neighborhood. It makes a significant change in the neighborhood's quality. Please remember, one vacation rental affects eight houses nearby, and if there's some disruption, it's going to affect those. Across the street from me, it was also referenced earlier, that we have a house, it takes 14 people, it has five to seven cars in front of it every time it's rented. It's rented over 300 times per year. Further down our street, we have four rentals that are contiguous. The parking is so bad there that fire and rescue have not been able to sometimes navigate the street safely. That is a health hazard. I would ask you to consider these issues and to consider the following things. Grandfathering in, grandfathering in all the homes that are presently licensed and the ones on the waiting list are going to make this problem continue to be bad, and it's not going to do anything for our issue on Beachcomber. The issue of basically having a buffer between houses is a very significantly useful thing, as long as it's fair, but it does have to be significantly large. Third, those eight people I spoke about in homes around a vacation rental, I think they should have a right to speak to the city and have input before that license is issued. And with those things done, I also understand that the, another important thing I wanted to mention is, I think there needs to be a difference between hosted and non-hosted vacation rentals. We should support hosted vacation rentals, but non-hosted vacation rentals, like the one diagonally across from me, we should honestly just say what it is. It's a motel functioning in an R1 zone. And if so, if it's going to exist, it should be charged and pay the same fees as other motels do, and I think the fees to get that license should be significantly increased. The Coastal Commission does allow capitation, and it does allow buffering between houses. All they need is the cooperation of a commission and a city council to work with them, and they can craft a plan that works for each individual city.
Could you please conclude?
I'm done.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is Larry Schmidt. I live at 350 Bernardo. And, you know, when this process is over with and the general plan is adopted, I think the way it's presented now, we're going to have almost all of these existing vacation rentals turn up as legal non-conforming uses. And how do you deal with those? It's not going to make the problem go away if we allow them to just keep on going. So, and I think you have a letter from me suggesting some ways to encourage people that have these uses now with the sanction of the city. You know, they are, they're proved to do this. They're not doing anything wrong. But we have to encourage them to give up those uses, so that in an ideal world, when this is all done, everybody is compliant. I don't think we'll have any problems then. They're not going to want to do that because they're making so much money. I would suggest that the fees for vacation rentals go up to the point where a system of, for lack of a better word, buying people off to get out of the system will be self-sustaining. You know, these things make a lot of money, and that's really what's driving it. And I guess I'm just putting that on the table so that we can try and figure out a way to solve this without going to court. If you have to go to court once, you're going to lose everything. It's so...
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's my point.
Okay. Thank you. Next, please. Please state your name.
Charles Trendbeth. I live at 374 Beachcomber. What Dr. Vaughn didn't mention about Beachcomber is it's an extra narrow street. I believe it's 24 feet in width, and when you look at giving the rental, short-term rentals, look at the narrowness of the street and available parking. It's, it makes it extra tough to navigate with these rentals.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, I'm Carol Tewesdale. I've been in Morro Bay since 1995 and homeowner. I am not a vacation rental person. I have come, my husband and I have a blended family of eight children and wives and grandchildren. So when they all come into our house, it's, you know, it's kind of pandemonium on the Potomac, and parking does become an issue. I, I think that, in all fairness to everyone, that a tried-and-true plan, Pismo Beach, you work there, Scott, you have access, a boilerplate, get the coalition of the vacation owners together, give them, have them form a group, like a blue-ribbon group, let them tell you and what's fair and what's right, and make it better for all of us. I mean, in my hood, I tell my neighbors, hey, the kids are coming, they understand, so can I park here, can I park here, can I park here? The communication is out there. And so I think a good, good, solid plan will relieve a lot of issues. And thank you, and I apologize for being late because I was reading all the agenda correspondence, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Deedee Alexander, Morro Bay resident. I feel very strongly that all vacation rentals need to follow the same health and safety codes that the city hotels and motels are required to follow. This includes regular annual inspections.
Thank you. Uh, next, please.
My name is Maggie Jurrin, and I own a business at 259 Morro Bay Boulevard. I realize I come before you tonight as the perceived villain. I am the owner of companies that manage 33 vacation rental properties in Morro Bay. Many of you probably have lived near a home we manage. I'm here to tell you that we want to be good neighbors. We do everything we can in advance of our guests arriving at the home, to tell them that parties and large gatherings are not allowed, we have our antennas up talking with our guests to recognize any clues that might indicate it is going to be a party group, we decline all reservations that seem like they could be trouble. But you can't catch them all and a few slip through. And this is where you come in as a conscientious neighbor. Call us when our guests are truly breaking the noise ordinance or causing disturbance in the neighborhood, or parking on the street where they shouldn't. We have 24-hour availability for response to these complaints. I've gotten up myself at 11 o'clock at night, midnight, to go out and check things. What we face here in Morro Bay is a real dilemma. The city's main industry and source of income is tourism, and there are many efforts to promote our beautiful city as a tourist destination. Everyone here has chosen to live in a place that is also very attractive to tourists. And vacation rentals, as a preferred lodging choice for many travelers, has grown exponentially over the past five years, and the projections are that that will continue to do so. If the Morro Bay citizens choose to choke this industry, then you're absolutely sending your tourist dollars to another town at a time that Morro Bay desperately needs the revenue produced by these. A family of eight that wants to come together for a wonderful week of family time by renting a vacation rental will not decide to rent four hotel rooms if that vacation rental's not available. They will stay somewhere else where they can stay in a VR. The key to making VRs work in our community is you, the neighbors. If you observe VR guests that are misbehaving, call the local contact. Make them do what they are supposed to do, which is to ensure that their guests are being good neighbors. I know it is very easy to only remember the one group of the summer that came in and partied till 2:00 a.m., but I ask you to really look at the percentage of bad actors versus good. Hold the managers or contacts accountable and report unregistered VRs. Understand that if most of the VRs were not allowed to operate as a VR, they would sit there empty as a second home for the owner who would come three or four times a year. They would not become available housing for local people. Yes, that might be great for you as a neighbor, but that is devastating for the economy of Morro Bay. We need the TOT, and we need the patronage of the local business by the tourist. We support most of the new proposed regulations to further control the impact of the VRs in our neighborhoods, and we welcome your suggestions on how we can improve as property managers to make your neighbor experience better. Let's work together to make VRs work in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, excuse me, what was your name?
My name is Maggie Jurrin.
Maggie, and did I understand correctly, you have like a 24-hour first responder thing?
We're the contact of record on all 33, and it's registered with the police department, it's posted on our blue cards, it's in the house.
Thank you. Okay, next, please.
So I'm Nick Jurrin, I'm the other half of Beach and Bay, and you relax vacation rentals. Tourism is the lifeblood of Morro Bay and essential to fund the city services that we, that the residents and the business owners all enjoy. Morro Bay is a jewel that we must share with the rest of the world, and we are all privileged to live here in this environment. We, like many, offered our home as a vacation rental and then finally relocated here. Many of our owners plan the same thing. Today, our operations contribute to the local economy with over $200,000 a year we currently pay in TOT taxes to Morro Bay, excluding the 1% to the county. We also pump $500,000 annually in the form of monies paid to our contractors and our foreign employees. Airbnb tells us that for every dollar our guests spend in lodging, they spend another $3.4 or about $6.8 million annually from our operations, in which Morro Bay is the likely recipient. Based on the latest TOT report, we currently generate close to 50% of the total TOT paid in Morro Bay today. So we're the big villain. It's interesting, though, because we have only 14% of the 250 registered vacation rentals. So based on that math, it would illustrate that even though the city has a 250 number, many people rushed out to fill that, to fill that number. And how many of those vacation rentals are actually active? A number of 100 was mentioned. I think that we have probably about 100 active vacation rentals that you could say really are doing something. And again, we generate half of that revenue. This, in our eight years of operations, we have welcomed 7,000 individual groups to our homes. And our eight, and over 40,000 people, without a single violation, and are operating history both in Morro Bay and the county. And we operate in Cayucus and also in Paso Robles. We find our naughty guests to account for less than one-half of 1% of our visiting guests, but we understand our neighbors all remember the bad one. We are committed to be good neighbors, as evidenced by our track record of being responsive to the concern of the neighbors that work with us. We want to know if the guests are misusing our homes and not being good neighbors. We want our business to be sustainable. It's our responsibility to control our guests, as is, is under law with the current code as it exists today. By current code, we're the enforcers. We need your cooperation. If you don't tell us there's a problem, we can't respond. Most calls we get are after the fact, if we're at the property and they say, hey, you had a bad group in here. Why didn't you call? We support an age requirement of 25 to rent a home. We suggest that be added to the code. We can enforce that, but if the city regulates it, we can. We also support the requirement like Pismo has, that the responsible party be within a short distance of the home to be able to respond to complaints. I just want to share a few facts. Data at the county reveals that vacation rental in general have the same rate of domestic disturbance complaint as any other residential home that's on the county record. And one last point, we want to work with the groups that have concerns, and we find to, and we can support evidence that if you restrict vacation rental, for the most part, it'll just go underground and be unlicensed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please. Excuse me, could you please state your name? Again, I'm sorry.
It's Nick Jurrin.
Sure.
And it's Beach and Bay, and you relax.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Martini, Morro Bay. The one thing on vacation rentals, I think an earlier person mentioned, is having a lower cap, because I do know that when you're talking about one of the main zoning issues in Morro Bay is neighborhood compatibility. We've owned a home down in Oceano Beach, where at times it was rented out, we'd have, it was just wild parties. In the neighborhood, it was really terrible. We finally sold because, I mean, it was just nonstop, and it wasn't fair to the neighbors. In Cayucus, the same thing. We used to live in Cayucus, and some of the vacation rentals made it almost unbearable to live in. So I think some of the things you're putting in now are important. But I think the most important is to go on some of the numbers like Santa Cruz and that, where if you had a cap of around 100, it would be less impact. You're also, if you have 250 vacation rentals, you're talking about Morro Bay as far as the motels and your tourists. You'd be cutting into the actual motel business and indicated that maybe 50% of the people now are staying in vacation rentals, so you're actually almost cutting off your nose despite your face as far as your tourist industry. You may be stretching your motel capacity too thin and taking, you know, stealing from Peter to pay Paul routine. So, again, getting back to neighborhood compatibility is extremely important, and if you're going to have the vacation rentals, you might think about lowering the cap to 100, because that sounds currently, that's exactly what you have, is 100 active. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, please.
When I sit down, would you clarify when we can talk about other topics, or maybe you've already said that and I came late?
This is, yeah, this is basically for vacation rentals.
Only vacation rentals. Okay. I did send you an email and asked several questions. I'd like to support what Mr. Martini just said. I think we need a lower cap. I also mentioned in my email that if you have 200 feet between the vacation rentals on my street, that would be every fourth house, and that's pretty frequent. And I also didn't understand if, by the way it's written, is that literally down the street, or is that a radius of 200 feet around houses? So I, I need to understand that. Is that the neighbor behind me as well as the one on my street, like a circle, or is it just straight down the street? What does that 200 feet mean? And I hope you'll answer my other questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, next, please.
My name is David Zep, and I live with my wife at 120 Java Street. This is a currently licensed property, so I do have a personal interest in this. This is an extra bedroom in the house of our primary residence, so I guess is that maybe what is called hosted style. This is, this is our primary residence, so obviously there's oversight by the owners on all, all people that are staying here. I do think that it's important to realize that vacation rental to a large segment of the population, I believe, is the preferred vacation stay option. In fact, when I go vacationing now, that's absolutely, the first option I'm looking for is a vacation rental rather than a hotel-type arrangement. I would ask you to consider that the use of, of our property as a rental is a key part of our financial strategy, actually, in order to be able to stay in our house, and I think that's probably the case also for potentially other people. Obviously, I'm concerned about any change in status of existing licensed properties, and so please consider this in your decision. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Fry, and I think I sent you all a letter, and I'm assuming I should have an opportunity to review it. And I think there is this unfair assumption that, that the vacation rentals make a lot of money, that that's all that they're about, and I think that is not the case. I came from Fresno, came from Clovis, and the way we were able to come here was staying in people's homes. I think there's a large group of people who live in the valley, who own a home here. They come here as often as they can, but they're, they're oftentimes renting out their place to, to family, to close friends, to acquaintances, people they trust and know will take care of their property. They're not generating a lot of money out of this. They're really just taking care of their property, helping to defray expenses. So there's a, a group of people that I'm not sure you're considering in all of this. The second thing is, I, just in general, the idea of the cap or the 200-foot distance, which is dramatic compared to some of our neighboring communities. You look at Cayucus, you look at Avala Beach, you look at, you look at Cambria, all of those are much less. In other words, they're much more, they're easier on the, on the, on the owners. This would be the most aggressive in this part of the coast. And, and I guess the idea of imposing these restrictions, which really limit homeownership, presumes that there's actually been a problem. And we hear a lot about the noise and congestion and all this, but I would like to know how many complaints have actually been made, how many, I mean, first of all, there's a posting requirement. You're supposed to post your, the owner's name, information, so if there's a problem, you can contact the owner, and the owner can deal with it. If, if that doesn't work, I mean, Morro Bay Initial Code, Section 5.40.070, lays out this, this protocol that you got to follow. The first time, you get a warning. The second time, you get a fine. The third time, the fine goes up. The fourth time, the fine goes up even more. The fifth time, the license is revoked for a year. I would like to know how many revocations have actually happened, how many fines have actually occurred? Because before you start imposing these restrictions, you have to try to enforce the law. And if there's been no attempts to enforce the law when there's loud rentals, it doesn't make sense to, to create a law when you haven't even tried the enforcement. If there's a problem with speeding your neighborhood, the first thing to do is not to put up more stop signs or speed bumps. It's put the police out there to write tickets, and the vast majority of the time, that's going to take care of it. And I would propose that before we take this draconian step of imposing all these restrictions on people's legitimate ownership, that you actually analyze if there's really a problem. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, please.
Hi, I'm Victoria Schmidt, and I am a resident of Morro Bay. And I'm not going to reiterate what other people have said, but I would like to point out the contact. Everybody is talking about the contact, call the contact. Well, you can't see the contact. It might be a little piece of paper by the front door or upstairs. You can't see it. What they do in Maui, as a suggestion, is they have a two-square-foot sign that is posted in prominent areas with the address, the owner, the contact number, clearly visible for all. So perhaps you haven't had complaints just because you can't see it. Also, are you going to approach a house that has 10 or 15 people partying, they're drunk? You're going to walk up to the door and go, excuse me? Or go up to the door and try and find the contact number? You're not. And my other stance is no vacation rentals in residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is Tom Harrington. I'm an 18-year resident of Morro Bay, living in the same house on Kern Avenue, and I'm a vacation rental owner. I'm what's called a hosted vacation rental owner. I make a very strong point, and I believe in this philosophically and politically, that only owners who live on premises should be doing vacation rentals. It's clear as a bell to me. I think if you took any of these incidents we're talking about, like the issue on Beachcomber, I would guess that probably 90% of those are non-owner-occupied vacation rentals. And by owner-occupied, I try to keep my personal, I mean, I, I measure myself. I could rent my house every weekend of the year, period. There's sufficient demand at very lucrative prices. I could do that. I do not do that because I don't believe I should go over 40% rental time in a year. So I restrain myself and keep it to a small number. I think some of the other problems we're running into, and I'm going to try to address some things I heard, uh, coming up here. The gross number of rental units alone, vacation rentals alone, is not the solution to the problem. It's how those things are owned, and how they're operated, how they're regulated, and how they're monitored. they're monitored by the city of San, the city of Morro Bay. When I got into this business this time around, about three years ago, I was renting out my house, paying my TOT tax and going along. And I would ask casual questions of the people at city staff. How many people do you think are coming in paying their fees? They said, "We have no idea." There was absolutely, all this money was flowing through the system and the city of Morro Bay had no way of regulating it or capturing some of the earnings for their own coffers. So I think that's one of the problems. In my neighborhood on Kern Avenue, there are three vacation rentals within 200 feet of one another. That's three within 200 feet. There have never been, to my knowledge, and I'm, I'm very well acquainted with all my neighbors, never been any complaints in the three years that I've been doing this of noise or anything else. I, I host now through Airbnb and I find that their candidates are very well, very well vetted and looked at. I have used other management firms and they have not been as well vetted and so on and so forth. I rent my house out with my stuff in it. I have a very valuable art collection in my house. I don't touch it. I don't even lock my door when I leave. I have my stereo system, my computer system, and it's a nice one. I have valuable plants in my yard. I do not do anything to secure those plants because I have been assured over the last three years that the chances of damage or loss of any of those things is negligible. I sympathize with the people where there is noise. I mean, I hate noise myself. I like a very quiet neighborhood, so I sympathize with those people. But the way to do it is to have owner occupied rentals or hosted rentals, what I call them. I think it's important to realize that vacation rentals, it's not an either or situation. I don't think we can close all the vacation rentals and say, "Well, those folks would just go to hotels and motels." Not true. I can provide a service at my house that is far more valuable than a motel or hotel for a family visiting from out of town. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good, thank you.
My name, my name's Homer Alexander, I'm a Morro Bay resident. I'm going to speak a little out of turn. I believe that increasing the height limit is critical if there's going to be any chance of revitalizing the downtown core.
Can we?
Hopefully, this zoning change will incentivize current and future property owners to invest in Morro Bay. I have two suggestions that relate to the section on vacation rentals. In paragraph E, number of tenants, I would replace the word bedroom with bathroom. There's a show up. In paragraph G, existing non-conforming vacation rentals, after the word operate, add the words for three years. Add four additional sentences as follows. At the end of the three years, the property owner must submit an application for renewal of the license. Prior to granting the new license, the proposed vacation rental will be noticed to all property owners within 200 feet. If no protests are received, the new license will be issued. If the new request for license is protested, the application will be referred to the Morro Bay Planning Commission for review. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Heding Kessler. I hadn't planned to speak this evening, but I feel that I must. My parents bought the home on Beach Comer Drive in 1980, and I've been coming here to this town for 38 years. At that time, that block of Morro Bay was a neighborhood. There were families, there were children. And in that 38 years, seven houses with an eighth coming up have become vacation rentals. I inherited the property, I now live there, and I don't live in a neighborhood. I live in a motel. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rich Buke. I'm a member of GPAC, but I'm, tonight I'm speaking to you tonight as a co-owner with my wife, Diane, of a vacation rental located in an accessory unit behind our main residence. In early 2016, council approved the grandfathering of approximately five existing vacation rentals and accessory units on properties that were owner occupied. This was done prior to the city council meetings that subsequently set the current 250 vacation rental limit in residential areas. I want to suggest three goals to include in the vacation rental ordinance work that I feel would make the final ordinance a success. They are eliminate, enforce, and educate. And I've given you all copies of this. First, eliminate. Council should consider immediately directing the city manager and appropriate staff to proactively investigate and find and are shutdown all illegal vacation rentals operating in Morro Bay. This should be done prior to implementation of the finalized vacation rental ordinance, whichever way it turns out. Enforce. No owner occupied vacation rentals, I'm sorry, non-owner occupied vacation rentals must have a local contact person available to respond within 30 minutes of notification of a complaint and take remedial action as necessary. A local contact person for existing licensed vacation rentals must be submitted to the city within 30 days of the final vacation rental ordinance. Vacation rental owners are required to include the final, finalized regulations such as parking, noise, and occupancy, and all booking contracts, and should be posted inside the vacation rental. We currently do this with ours. The regulations should also include the statutes and penalties per the municipal code for any violations of these regulations. And finally, third, council should authorize the establishment of a vacation rentals, vacation rental owners association or city commission. This group would meet to discuss issues regarding vacation rental and neighborhood issues as well as pass best practices for other vacation rental owners. Mailings could update all vacation rental owners of the number of complaints, closed vacation rentals, and new vacation rentals. The group could also assist the city with training of both vacation rental owners and adjacent neighbors on ways to call in complaints and resolve them quickly. The city could also provide mediation training to a small vacation rental task force that could facilitate these meetings if necessary. Thanks for listening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would wish to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ruchdi Khadr. I just wanted to actually echo, I think, some of the, some of the comments that are made today, and that is that I think adequate vetting, I think, really lends into making this a workable issue with vacation rentals. In terms of, for example, the issue of age, the issue of the number of people staying at a, at a particular time, the issue of parking, I think all of those are important. And in addition to that, I think any of us in this room would feel that it would be intolerable to be woken up at 2:00 AM with a loud bunch of kids causing problems. That being said, I think it's, I think it's just entirely untrue to make this statement that the people that come, for example, when we've traveled to other communities to stay and whether it's in Hawaii or any other place, or when I go do trainings for law enforcement, we typically, like one of the other gentlemen here, we typically stay in a, in a vacation rental. Why? Because it's nice to have that additional room. It's nice to be able to stay there as a family instead of in individual hotel rooms. And that does offer, I think, a great benefit to families, to professionals, to be able to have that, that venue. And so to say that, for example, in San Luis Obispo, there's 32,000 calls for service a year from the police department. 7,200 of those are transient members of our community in San Luis Obispo. But those aren't the people that are renting vacation homes, right? You know, those are another segment of the population where we have a problem. And so I think, again, I think it's disingenuous to, for someone to stand up here and say that people staying in these places bring crime to this community. It's entirely untrue. So I'll just leave it at that. And I think some of the other comments that I made were already made. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any other, anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Okay. Going, going, gone. I'll bring it back to the, to the planning commission here. And I think maybe we'll do it a little bit different. Scott, would you like to, would you like to respond to some of the issues that were brought up as far as proposed, the proposed ordinance, proposed standard, as how they will address them or?
We had the question about how, brought by a couple of folks, how the buffer is measured. It's from the exterior of the property line. So what you see on the map is 200 feet from the exterior property lines. So it's not from the house itself or the front property line. It goes front to back. It's 200 feet all the way around it. So it would go on to streets behind it, that type of thing, if that was the question.
How many complaint, one of the questions was, was brought up quite a bit, how many complaints have we had? How many enforcement issues have been brought up?
We, we don't get very many complaints. And about half the complaints we do get related to vacation rentals turn out not being vacation rentals. We have three active right now, two active, three active right now. One of them may or may not be a vacation rental, a little bit of a question, and the other one has some locational issues and neighbor issues. And so we've been kind of working through that, whether it's, it's a few complaints, but none of the complaints have been justified. So, meaning they've called the police, police have come out, they weren't being, they weren't being noisy enough to violate our noise ordinance, that type of thing. So again, we don't get very many complaints on them. And maybe because people aren't, you know, just aren't calling the city, although they call us for everything else. Seems odd that they wouldn't call us for this, but I mean, I don't have an explanation beyond that, other than it's not something we regularly get complaints on.
Do we have a database that, that client or neighbors can call the city and see if there's, if it's a legal vacation rental for a house?
They certainly can. They can, they can call the, our business license folks in the finance department. They can call the planning department. We can look it up and verify whether they have an active license or not. Oftentimes, that's what happens, you know, because we have a lot of second homes in town, you've heard that sort of pervasively this evening. And what will happen is somebody let family stay there and a lot of people showed up and that ends up being largely, the majority of the complaints we get related to vacation rentals end up not being vacation rentals, but their family, they let family stay there. Those are types of issues. They came in, they were noisy, had too many people there, that type of thing. It's why the regulations have limitations to occupancies, you know? We put, we put those in there. Those were not in Title V of the municipal code, where a portion of the vacation rental policies live currently. So we, those are one of the things that we put into the, into the proposed ordinance is to limit it by bedroom. So you see, you don't have those ones with the 14, 15, 16 people.
Do we have an issue more, do you have a feeling whether it's, there's more of a problem with hosted or unhosted VRs?
We don't, I can't say that I've had any complaints, I've had zero complaints since I've been here related to hosted vacation rentals, which is not surprising if they're hosted, there's someone there to monitor what's going on hopefully, and so you can see that being, you know, something you'd have less of an issue with. Again, we just don't, we just don't get that many complaints, you know, about them. It's not something.
And then how would we, how would the new ordinance handle existing vacation rentals when they are more than within, or closer than 200 feet?
Right now, there's, there's nothing in there that requires them to go away. Like, the ordinance right now doesn't hit the reset button. It just acknowledges that they're there and as those come in and, come in and go out, then new ones that come in would be required to meet that requirement of 250, or of 200 feet of the buffer. So I was kind of showing you the map there. When you start spreading them out, you can see how those polygons, those circles, rough circles, would start melding into one another as you start pushing them away from one another. And so there likely is a, a maximum capacity that's in the 250, in the 250 range, or maybe less than that, once you start pushing them all out to 200. So the city could do that. I mean, we could go through the process and say, no, hey, you know, we could hit the reset button and then everybody brings their applications in and it's a lottery. Super labor intensive to do that. And it indicates the situation where, when we started going down this road and we implemented the original moratorium two years ago, we had 170-ish vacation rentals. And those are folks that had acquired property, and you've heard some of them speak, you know, and were operating vacation rentals and, you know, legally and, and that to some extent. And you see that, some of the correspondence that you receive, there's concern about that sort of ripping the rug out from underneath them because they were compliant. And so that issue is one that's out there. If we go down and hit the reset button, then it throws everybody out and somebody that was acting, you know, purchased their house, got a vacation rental permit, and was acting legally from the beginning, at least prior to us implementing the moratorium. The language that went along with the moratorium said, hey, you, there's no guarantees. So any, from any above that 170 number, those folks theoretically were on notice that, that that might happen, that there's no guarantee that you get to keep it. You're, just you might end up being existing non-conforming, you might end up not having one later. So.
Do we have a process for weeding out the bad actors in the, you know, in the, in the vacation rentals?
We have, we have a process that, that talks about warning and then fines and those types of things. Honestly, we haven't issued any fines for any of them since I've been here. We've been able to resolve issues that we've had. You know, oftentimes, it's the investigation, we get the complaint, and then we have to go look into it. And largely, we've been able to resolve most of the issues that we've had. Sometimes we go out there and they don't have the sign. I liked some of the ideas, though, that appeared this evening. The larger signs was great because that's one of the things I've heard before, and that might, we could, we could put a mandatory size in there and maybe come up with a, you know, the design, it's a city design that you have to use for the posting so they all look the same. You might recall, when I got here, one of the issues was, it was hard to kind of see our noticing for public hearings. And so we, now we have the big yellow signs that we put out in front of everybody so everybody knows that. And I created a situation where we started putting up those sort of neon orange signs when you have a building permit. So everybody knows because staff was spending a lot of time answering questions, getting calls, you know? Does this permit, this guy that's doing work, does he have a permit? You know? And so now we have that out there, people can see it, and they know to look for that sign. And so, so those types of things could, could work very well with vacation rentals. So that may be something for the, for the commission to consider.
Do we have any limitation on the number of cars that are allowed for each vacation
So you'll, you'll see a TBD in that section of the policies because we haven't developed that yet. It would be commensurate with the occupancy limitations that's on the house. And you're required to provide all of the parking for it onsite. So we don't, that number is in the parking section and we, and that hasn't been brought forward yet. It's in the next module that's going forward for us.
Okay. I'm just asking questions that I heard come forward, so.
No, no, perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Now, also about the transferability of the license. I've heard, I've heard a lot and we've, we've gotten a lot of correspondence regarding that. What is the history on that and how is it determined that licenses were to be non-transferable?
So we had it, that they were transferable. We reviewed the ordinance with the GPAC and the preference on the, on the general planning advisory committee was that, that we not have them transfer upon sale. And so we made that change and that, so that has been one, the one section of the policy that's changed between general planning advisory committee and planning commission. So we've also gotten a lot of correspondence and that you've received and you have copies of that have concerns with that. So that's not something that, when I noticed, by folks.
I have a specific question on that, Scott. So in the event of a sale, that, that kind of makes sense, but what if, what if someone would have passed away and that property was inherited? Is there a way to differentiate there?
You can write a policy that would allow that to happen, yes. Right now, it's not in there, but yes, that is something that can happen. It's simple. And you see that policy out there. Sometimes they're different, sometimes they're the same, sometimes they include it in, they're non-transferable and it includes that situation is where if you inherit the property. It depends on how you, how the city wants to have.
Now about, there was also brought up a couple of times about a committee liaison group between the city and the, and the owners of vacation rentals. Has that been thought out?
It's nothing we've discussed. It's no direction that we've gotten from, from anyone at council, I guess would be the one that would make that decision. You know, if that's like the solution on the ongoing basis, wants to be adopt the ordinance. Again, the issue remains the same, we don't get very many complaints, so that group's not going to meet very much, I guess. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll, thank you.
Is there a, so the TOT that we collect, is there a way to mandate that they actually use the vacation rental that they've applied for? In other words, like a use it or lose it type of situation?
So while we went, so I'll give you an example, yes, short answer, longer answer. This is an issue that came up while we were in the middle of the moratorium, and we said, okay, well, we review them over time, because you have to renew the license every year. If they haven't paid TOT, we kick them out, because we have over 70 on the waiting list right now. And so if they weren't paying us TOT, they weren't using it. And so we said, no, you can't have it anymore, because you'd never, you're not using it, so we want to give it to someone that's going to use it, and so that's what we did. So you could play, we could create a policy that does that, and says that, you know, you have to show proof that you rented it X number of days, that you're actually using it, so you're not holding it vacant, and so, you know, limiting the number, limiting the folks, so you could put something in that. And I've actually seen that in a few ordinances out there, so that's not an uncommon thing.
Would it be like a, a general tax, if you will, per month or per quarter for the vacation rentals?
I mean, we could, we could sit down, and, I mean, I'd have, I'd have a look at the occupancy, what occupancy information we have related to vacation rentals, to come up with a solution. It could be that you have to provide us proof of the number. Like, one of the folks came up here and referenced the fact that the city hasn't really been doing auditing of vacation rentals, and that's true. Although I've talked to our current finance, our new finance director, Jennifer Callaway, and she's like, yeah, that's something we got to get up. We do audit hotels, we should be auditing vacation rentals, folks as well. And so she's indicated a desire that we, you know, an agreement anyway, that we probably need to go, start going down that road to do more verification. So we could probably, so through that process, we could put a minimum number of days that, you know, that they have to rent it over time, if that's the desire.
Okay, Scott, also, do you have any feeling on occupancy rate for the hotels, and if it's, if that's been affected by the vacation rentals?
Well, occupancy rate's going, I've been going up over time, and we're projecting another increase over the next fiscal year, so I don't think we're having an issue related to that. And certainly, over the last 10 years, vacation rentals have become much more popular, you know? And, and certainly, an alternative to hotel rooms, that oftentimes families take advantage of, and from what you, what we see, and really popular over the last five years, I think. You know, the increase in the number of them, and the popularity of them has been sort of dramatic, so.
Okay, well, open it up for anything that I might have missed. Michael, do you have any?
I have a whole slew of things, excuse me if they're, if they're a little scattered. Do we have any, do we have any stretching this out into the harbor at this point? Vacation rentals on boats?
I don't, I don't think the policy currently addresses that, no. We've had conversations about it, and, and with harbor as well. And if we were to allow those types of things, that we would have to regulate them underneath a similar type ordinance, but we don't currently have it in the ordinance, so it's not currently regulated that way.
Let me see, I, I have a ton of things here, I just have to be able to read my writing. Do you know offhand, I mean, I, I hear a lot of the communication, both through the email and here tonight, that the residents tend to look at this negatively. Has this risen to a point that if someone is going to purchase a house, it becomes a disclosable thing? Like, you have to say Diablo Canyon's down there, and here Tsunami Zone. Do you have to say that you've got, you've got rental units, vacation rentals, within a certain distance of your?
I think it's something somebody could look up on their own. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know real estate law, but.
No, neither.
Professional real estate.
I want to know.
I would think not, though.
And then, I didn't look at the G-PAC film. Was, was there discussion about this gradation issue, the difference between the hosted, non-hosted, the owner occupied some days, not some days? You know, because it seems to me that it's like, between the scale from 2 to 16 or whatever, and then the hosted to non-hosted gradations of who's in residence, there's like a spectrum of things here. And, and I bet, if you really listen to the chatter, the problem is not the hosted one or two people in a house.
And I think that's, that's largely the conversation that you're, you're seeing sort of across the state right now. This is, I mean, this is a hot button issue in just about every coastal city up and down the coast right now, that doesn't have an ordinance. So, but to answer your question, the G-PAC did speak to it. So we started going down, but the conversation, interestingly enough, centered on, oh, we should have a lesser buffer for the, the hosted. And I had raised the question, you know, the issue that largely the reason behind the regulation was a desire by many not to have them in our residential zones at all, because the folks feel that it changes the nature and the feel of that neighborhood. Don't necessarily disagree with that. But it's unlikely that we would be able to ban them. And I've been told such, as such from the coastal commission, they, they view them as a, as a means to affordable accommodations in the city, and would probably be unlikely to allow us to ban them in residential zones. So when I raised that issue, and they talked amongst themselves, and we didn't really get any clear direction out of them, whether they wanted to do something with that. I think they sort of agreed with the concept that, well, we didn't really want them in our residential zones to begin with, so why were we encouraging certain ones over others? Just depends on, I guess, how you frame that, how you frame the ordinance. And if, if you want a majority of them to be that, then we probably could look at some of the ordinances out there, and then have a conversation with coastal staff to get, to get, you know, what's, what's acceptable on their side of things. Because the city of Santa Cruz just went through this, literally this, this exact issue, and they were trying to just allow the hosted ones, and they got a lot of pushback from the commission on that.
I just think it's something to look at, to further make a gradation as we go forward, because we've got, my favorite part of the, the report was where we talked about a correspondence between numbers of goats and horses and pygmies, and picking goats and chickens, and one of the, you know, we had an equivalence chart for small animals in the household, you know? So I think we should be able to look at the finer grain for how you look at vacation rentals, because my sense is the impact of these things is radically different, despite the fact they're all generically being called the same thing. And, and, you know, that, that's just something that occurred to me.
Michael, let me spread it out a little bit, and come back.
Okay. It does occur that I do have one question and a statement, but it might be useful for, for this board. Sitting as I, as I do now on the general plan advisory committee, it operates very differently than this body. And it's particularly difficult to use the structure to develop a clear consensus. So in terms of, of recommendations coming out of that board, it's far from complete. I guess that's all I can say about that. And they address a wide range of materials, and I think that's part of the reason. But the question is, with respect to the permits, has there ever been a discussion about the permits actually having sort of like a term limit? Someone who has a permit might enjoy that permit for one or two or three years, and then he would be asked to, or her, she would be asked to go to the bottom of the waiting list, and it gets turned over to somebody else.
No one's ever raised that concept before. The closest one was the gentleman that got up there and suggested that you might look at reviewing them after a period of time. That's an interesting way, I thought, that was actually a creative way to deal with the existing ones. If we weren't going to just hit the reset button, then to have them, have them all reviewed over a period of time, again, labor intensive, but that would be a way, you know, to do that, is to have them reviewed after a certain period of time, and then do the noticing thing and go back out. I mean, internally, it would, would be, again, labor intensive and time consuming, but that would be a way to go about, looking at them to see how they're functioning, and if they're, you know, well thought of in the neighborhood or not, or whether you're having problems or you're not, because people will come out when you notice them.
It, it came to my mind, because, one, it would be a, a solution of sorts, I think, for the, for the, for the non-conforming permits that exist now, you might slowly weed them out and put more quickly than would otherwise. And then I'm also thinking, there's kind of an inherent unfairness issue in this, in that somebody sort of gets to the office before somebody else does, and he gets to have his permit, and someone, somebody very similarly situated doesn't, because there's now somebody within whatever we decide the range is. And so that inherent fairness might be dissipated if we said, well, you know, you get to enjoy your advantage, but it has a finite limitation in terms of time, and then someone else gets a chance.
Yeah, I've not seen any ordinances that do that. I've read several, I've not seen that policy come up, I've not really heard anybody suggest such a thing, so I haven't really given that thought before.
Well, it probably gets back to a larger point, which a lot of the things we're talking about undoubtedly have unintended consequences, because we're just sort of, you know, forging through new areas, and it's just, you know, we're thinking about.
Jesse?
As it pertains to the rest of our community, Cambria, Cayucos, Los Osos, Avila, you know, those types of areas, how is our policy or our proposed policy similar or indifferent?
We, we based ours on those policies, because the county was the closest and most recent jurisdiction to obtain certification through coastal with their policies. And their, the only real differences in their areas is the different community services districts have different buffers in them. I think 200 was the most that we saw. Okay, okay, so yeah, I think 200 was the largest one that we saw. I forget which one it was, was on now, but I've, I've seen so many, looked at so many ordinances over the, recently, they're sort of all run together a little bit. A lot of them have, I mean, because a lot of them use buffers.
Well, and so it makes sense that we would be compatible with the areas that are surrounding us.
And using, and I'm always keeping an eye on the things that we can get certified and things that we can't through coastal. We've had this conversation on an ongoing basis with the coastal commission staff, and we'll continue to engage them as, you know, new ideas come up and that type of thing.
Scott, I'd like, I'd like to take a look at it from a different perspective, a little bit. And I was going to ask you, I'll get to my question, a little background first. As a first responder to sewer collection emergencies in Cayucos, which back in 2004, there was a, there was like a huge amount of vacation rentals. One of the things I did was analyze the surcharging in the infrastructure with respect to vacation rentals. So what I would like to know is, is there some kind of, like, has, have you entertained any overlays, let's say, on different areas with regards to infrastructure capacity? And also maybe a rate, surcharge rate for vacation rentals in those areas?
Haven't given any consideration to increased fees of any sort related to vacation rentals. I mean, you know, looking at cities' water and sewer capacity and those types of things, the city is in the process of repairing the One Water Plan here, whatever that. And it's evaluating our capacities, it's evaluating our lines, what scape they're in, and setting, you know, future capital improvement project lists, and prioritizing, you know, all those types of things. So we're in the process of going through that. But that's, that's globally, that's for the entire city, it's not just related to vacation rentals.
Yeah, well, the issue with vacation rentals is, is that during certain times of the seasons, the, the way, like, if you, if you just look at it at the end, in study, like the wastewater treatment plant, and those things are, those things are calculated on monthly averages. But the standard of deviation on a daily basis or a weekly basis with regards to things are quite high. And locally, the collection systems are, there's areas that are overtaxed. That's why maybe having an overlay in certain areas that have local capacity collection issues, have they, have you studied in that respect?
Interesting point. I mean, it is one thing that the One Water Plan's looking at. There are areas where we had capacity issues that were noted in previous wastewater master plan. But because of the, you know, the citizenry of Moro Bay reducing its water usage fairly dramatically over the last few years, some of those capacity issues, I believe, have gone away. I mean, so we ask, we have capacity that we didn't initially, originally have, because we're, we're pretty good at conserving water. I'm not going to put a blanket statement that that's everywhere, but that is what the One Water Plan is looking at. So you'll get more specific and very specific data out of that. It'll address the things you're talking about. So it's, it's interesting to note that, that we've reduced our water usage so much that it's created capacity in lines that we didn't have capacity in before.
Well, I, I would just like to make a comment on that, because I've heard this water conservation comment. You know, we also have studies, our, our, our public work studies are standing by that our, our solids in our lines are having self-sealing properties on our collection lines. And if that's true, we should find out what people are eating in North Moro Bay, and we could save a ton of money on infrastructure repair.
I just want to follow up real quickly on that. I did a very quick non, you know, I didn't do this with any, any accounting clarity, but I've, I've tried to very quickly look at all of those 250 through VRBO. And if, this is probably off by a little bit, but those 250 units produce 1,706 spaces. That's not including the hosts there. So if those 250 units typically have two or three people in them, we've got about 750 residents. But if they get filled with the, to this level of intensity, they've got over twice that. So I guess what I'm saying is, the more we get away from the hosted ones, the higher the intensity of the uses, because now all those bedrooms are full. And, and that's what the larger ones are doing. They're impacting it at a higher intensity than the lower ones, I think. And so the, the sweet spot looks like about six to eight people seems to be about median for, for what these are. So I just think it's a, it's an intensity issue that I think we have to watch, because that's 1,700 people is, that's, you know, we're over 10% swing.
No, it's a significant amount of folks, I wouldn't argue it. I'm fair.
Scott, on the, where did the restriction on?
Say that again?
Where did the restriction on ADUs, on, on, on not allowing ADUs as vacation rentals? Where did that come from?
Uh, that came from the discussion we had, so ADUs and the intent behind them, and the intent behind the legislature is that those are, you know, what is de facto affordable housing. And so if that's how we're providing affordable housing, I think the concept is that you don't rent them out as vacation rentals, because then they're not providing that affordable housing. They're kind of affordable by design based on size. So you can rent out the primary unit, that's fine. The ordinance doesn't do anything with that, but it just says, hey, if you're going to have one of these things, and we're giving you the permits to do it, and the intent behind it is to be, you know, our affordable housing type of thing, workforce housing, that type of thing, then we want to make sure that that's who, that's who's occupying
And where, where does the coastal commission stand, and how, how would we be in standing with our, with these regulations that we're proposing with the coastal commission?
The way they're framed right now, they're largely similar to those in the county, in the county's certified LCP, so. That's what we based them on. We wanted to start from a place that we knew we could probably get certification, and in fact, coastal commission told us to do that. Like, we said, hey, we're the ones that you're looking at, what are the ones that have been approved? And they're like, oh, we've been working with the county, and, you know, we've gone through that, and it's, and it works pretty well. You know, you can figure out what buffer you want, but, you know, in that range that's in, that we have in the county LCP, then you'd probably be pretty good standing there. So that's what we went with, we started looking at that for guidance. Certainly, there are many other coastal cities out there, and there are many other policies, and a lot of the correspondence that you received point that out. I mean, there are some, there's some cities out there that have some pretty complicated vacation rental, Carpenteria, somebody mentioned that one, that one has little tiny areas in town with the different requirements on it. It's pretty fine grained and pretty, likely pretty difficult to implement and regulate, so.
Jesse?
I have comments, I don't know if we'll get to that.
I think we're, I think we're about to that point.
Okay, so, I mean, my, my general thoughts on this are, we need some more, we need some more guidance, we need some more enforcement, and we need to, and I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your name, you were talking about, you know, generating some sort of a group that, the gentleman right there.
One of the, one of the managers.
One of the managers, Nick, I believe? Well, anyway, so, I mean, you guys don't need permission to, to get together and talk. So, I mean, whether or not the city is, you know, behind that or not, I think it's a great idea that you guys get together and, and talk amongst yourselves, and maybe come up with some of your own self-governance, and maybe, you know, some, some just gentleman's agreements, for lack of a better term, on, on what you may or may not do, and I think that's a great idea. I think you getting together as a community and self-regulating would be and self-regulating would be a step in the right direction. I do agree with, I forgot the doctor's last name, he was talking about the, that it's not an increase in crime. And I agree with that. I don't, I don't think that these vacation rentals are necessarily, or, I mean, maybe specifically, there might be an offender, but I mean, I don't think that in general vacation rentals increase the crime level within the city. That's my opinion. I'm not a, I'm not a police expert, but, anyway, that's my thoughts.
Well, this is certainly, I'm going to state the obvious, it's certainly a complicated issue because there are, there are values on all sides. And I'm going to say again that we need more work and more discussion on this because it's, because of its complexity. And in particular, in our pursuit of our good intentions to avoid unintended bad consequences. And for this board, I was, given the complexity of it, I'll make my remarks as short as possible or maybe I'll even hold some of them off. Because I, for one, am typically informed by what the other commissioners have to say and it actually changes my opinion. So rather than just have me talk and be done with it, I think we ought to actually have a discussion. Having said that, and also, by the way, I am far from a critic of vacation rentals. I utilize them myself and I certainly see the social and economic trend, which is making them ever more popular. Okay, so here's some overview comments and then I'll follow with some specifics. And I'm going to depart from what I usually do. I'm actually going to refer to my notes because there's so many things to say and it's so complex. Okay, so I do believe that a high, a high concentration of vacation rentals does alter the quality of life in those specific neighborhoods. And, and I'm not at all talking about increased criminality, if you will. It's the, if it's an analogy, it's the difference between what we call legality and what we call justice. I mean, there are certain, things difficult to quantify, but nevertheless, they are things, values that represent a quality of a life in a neighborhood. And I think having a whole lot of vacation rentals concentrated in one very close area diminishes that quality of life. The, the, I also suspect, although we can't quantify this, that relaxing the rules on vacation rentals does diminish the total quantity of houses available for rental housing. I don't know how significant, but I implicitly, I know there's some kind of a diminishment. And that's really significant here in Memorial Bay where, where the rental inventory is so small. Now, and I realize, you know, the countervailing thought is, well, we're not, we're in the business of, of renting out just a bedroom and we're not, our home isn't available for long-term rental. But nevertheless, somewhere in the community, somehow this policy is having an effect on, on long-term rentals. There's absolutely no arguing that it's a really driving and growing economic force and only going to get larger. But, but that's not an argument for not regulating it closely. If anything, it's an argument for looking very closely at it and really controlling it and regulating how it develops. You know, I, I don't even want to suggest that vacation rentals, short-term vacation rentals are like liquor stores or massage parlors. They're certainly not. But I only say that in terms of, those are very lucrative, income generating opportunities for municipalities and they are nevertheless rather extensively regulated. And then there's also the fact that, one way or another, the innkeepers of Memorial Bay are at a disadvantage as this vacation rental, short-term rental grows despite sheer, sheer competition. And the advantage has been demonstrated by some of the speakers about the attractiveness of living at a home, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, with, and also with respect to the, to the notion that the permits should somehow travel with the title to the property, I don't think that's a good idea for a whole variety of reasons, including the continued inspection and the city having some power to intervene if things don't go right. But also, and I'll, I'll refer back to the whole idea of some kind of fairness in that being, being able to allow other people in the community to participate in this vacation rental advantage, other than the first ones who were sort of able to get to the steps of City Hall or the community office to file the permit. Okay, so now specifics. Let's see, the permit should, I don't believe that the permit should be transferable. I think, I think the city or some aspect of city government should periodically, probably on a yearly basis, be able to decide whether it's going to be extended or not. My, my impression is that the, the fines for various violations of the existing ordinances right now are anywhere near as punitive as they should be to really provide some incentive for people to, to follow the rules. And stating the obvious also, that non-payment and non-compliance should really carry with it the risk that the permit is, is canceled and the applicant is, for some period of time, isn't available to reapply. Now, some of the dicey issues. This, this business of 200 feet as being the suggested distance before you can have another vacation rental. And I think the 200 feet is a, it's a kind of a safe harbor that the Coastal Commission has applied, meaning they've, they've said that, okay, we, we will allow the consideration of that kind of a distance. I'm disposed to make it greater and I'm not particularly bothered by what the Coastal Commission calls as a safe harbor because I think they'd really be hard pressed to say 200 feet is a safe harbor, but 250 feet is capricious and arbitrary and unreasonable. I think you can, you can make some pretty convincing arguments that in a community like Memorial Bay, we should have more space. Oh, and absolutely, I think we need to distinguish between somebody who is renting a bedroom in his house and, and is a host and somebody who is not present on the house and has a two or three or four-bedroom home that he's renting. I don't see any similarities in the activity of those two individuals and they should not be treated the same as far as I'm concerned. And then there's a whole host of things that we should fine tune. Clearly, anyone who's having this kind of a vacation rental, holding out as a vacation rental, should have to provide what we decide is adequate parking on the property so it shouldn't foist a burden on, on the neighborhood. And this is, you know, an odd position for me since I'm always advocating that cars are light, but I really think we have to, we have to have that. Limitations as to how many days a year. Perhaps, perhaps no more than 30 days a year is, is a good idea. I'm not sure where that should fall, but there should be a limitation. And definitely a scaled down, what I'd say more reasonable limitation based on occupancy, you know. Oh, and given the concerns of people about the diminished quality of life, in the application procedure, I think the applicant should have to go to his adjacent neighbors. Now, I don't know if that's just one on either side and backing across the street, or perhaps it's another ring of five or six. And he has to go and tell them what he's planning and solicit their approval. Now, I'm not, at this point, I don't know what would constitute too much disapproval to, to make the application unacceptable, but certainly he should go, just as they do in a lot of municipalities when you're, you're trying to do some sort of remodeling, you're requesting a variance, and you have to go to your neighbors and say, what do you think about this? Okay, and I'm, I'll try, I'll try and be as quick as I can. And then, then, again, reiterating this whole idea of fairness, because I am bothered by the notion that the people who have the permits now, or are shortly to have them, have a really significant economic advantage. And how do you say it's fair to those who would also like to enjoy that? Because they're not going to take much solace in the fact that, well, the 250 people got to the courthouse before I did and that's why they get to have this. So I think we should really think critically about imposing a time limit on, on how long these permits are good and then when they expire, that person has to go to the, go to the end of the list. And with respect to having a business of doing this, and I'm, I'm sympathetic to the need of businesses to have, be consistent and have sort of predictability because people reserve these things well in advance. But that really, I would caution people not to make that argument because that's an argument that says, that's an argument that supports the reason we don't conduct businesses in residential areas because their needs are quite different than those of residential areas. And so the fact that predictability is required for business, for me, doesn't carry much weight in terms of providing predictability in these neighborhoods.
That's it. Jesse?
I've already said what I had to say.
Okay. Richard, you want to?
Thank, yeah, thanks, Joe. You helped me kind of get organized. And I, I agree with, yeah, I agree with what, what you just laid out. And in addition, regarding the overlays, or regarding that 200-foot barrier, I, I think that we could use, have overlays in different neighborhoods to help address some of that, those issues. For instance, you go to North Memorial Bay, okay? I'll give you an example of what happened right up our street. A vacation rental person got done, they're running late, boom, they ran over the neighbor's cat and kept on going and the cat just laid there, you know what I mean? And also, the, one of the speakers spoke about the children. And that is a, the health and safety issue is a great concern of mine, especially in our neighborhood. If you are familiar with like how tide runs as opposed to Java and all those other, you know, people that live there kind of know that, okay, when you're going up the street, you got to kind of slow down. But when people visit a vacation rental, they're zipping along on panorama, doing about 30 or whatever. You know, you can't really call the cop. It's already a done, did deal. So if we have those kind of things that could be noticed by people, hey, you know, recognize, you know, by the vacation rental people to notice that, be careful of the traffic and stuff. But I think some kind of an overlay where certain areas, maybe 200 feet's good, maybe five, four, 500 feet is better, okay? But having that, kind of like what we do with special, like, you know, special district, you know, when we look at things. The other thing is that I think that one of the common, you know, there's a lot of variables, but one variable that is quantifiable is that vacation rentals impact our infrastructure and the duration of time is smaller. And so we get these spikes. So I think that we should really consider looking at a, I don't know what language to use. I'm going to use a surcharge because that's the way I look at it, how it surcharges our infrastructure. So a surcharge for vacation rentals as, as they have imposed to our, to our infrastructure. Let me give you an example. Like, 4th of July over in Cayucus, we go from maybe 250,000 gallons a day to almost a million, okay? And what that does to our sewer plant is it spikes it and blah, blah, blah. And then those people leave and here the citizens. They're maybe going to be nailed with, with violations for, you know, discharge. So if we impose these surcharges on vacation rentals, I think that it'll help make, make it a little bit more equitable for the citizens that live here as, as who are, you know, dealing with the rates as they are. And the other... I'm going to hold off on that.
Chair, can I make an announcement?
Sure.
I know there's some folks are getting up and leaving and I want to, I want to note that this isn't the only opportunity folks are going to have to engage in this, in this conversation. I know this is more of get up, give your comments and there's not a two-way conversation happening. And I know folks probably desire to have that. And so two members of our city council are going to be hosting a forum on vacation rentals on June 20th. It'll likely be at the community center. I'll be there as well. And we'll engage in a more, you know, back and forth conversation on this. Hopefully, we'll take the input from the planning commissioner this evening, maybe wrap that up into some, you know, changes to the policies and enroll those out so they can see them, take that input. But I wanted to, as I know there's people getting up and leaving, and I wanted to let you know that that opportunity was coming forward. And we will notice it on the city's website under hot topics so that you can get the exact time, date and location. We're still working on that, what room it'll be in there and whether that's available. But that should be coming out here within, in the next week or so. We should have that nailed down. So again, just wanted to say that before more folks got up and walked out. Just realizing I was hearing footsteps, so.
Yeah, I wish we could have brought that up a little bit earlier, too. I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I hope we can take a look at breaking it down a bit more. I personally am leaning toward thinking the impacts of the hosted ones are not necessarily very large. The economic impacts to me are, do you trade off the idea of TOT versus somebody that has a family collecting, charging sales tax at Miners and Spencer's and, you know, things like that over the course of a year versus the year of rentals? And it's the intangible things I think are really tough. The people that testified on Beachcomber, I mean, I know my own streets that I walk. It's, it's pretty bleak sometimes, the number of places that are vacant. Then, you know, the parking lot gets all jammed up. I do think we need a huge enforcement opportunity. I mean, the one I'm most familiar with is one that blatantly says they converted their garage to a pool room and bar. They have no garage in that house anymore. And they're parking monster trucks in the driveway and sometimes on the street. And they do a good job of, I don't have any complaints about noise. Everybody sounds a little louder when they've had a drink or two, I think. But I think the, the main thing is the, this gradation between the hosted, non-hosted, to me, is a big issue. I think most of the impacts that we're seeing are non-hosted. And I would say maybe those should be the ones that we take a look at these buffers, distances, and maybe have less concern over the ones that are hosted.
Okay. I agree with a lot of what's been said here. I also am really glad to hear that we're going to have more workshops on this because I think that's going to be really critical, get a lot more input from the community. And everybody in this town has been impacted by vacation rentals, one way or the other, whether they're on, you know, the hosting side or whether they're on the receiving side of, of the surge of traffic and of effluence. So, but I think this is a, this is, is a complicated problem and it needs, you know, some thorough thought processes and maybe some massaging along the way, too. So maybe having it in the local coastal plan might be something that's too set in stone, where we should maybe have it more, you know, more as a, as an amendable item that can be changed as, as the need arises. So maybe we pull it out of the local coastal plan, you know, and look at it as, you know, as a general ordinance that may not have to go back through the Coastal Commission before we amend it. So that we can review it in a year, or we can review it in two years. So, go ahead, Jesse.
I was going to say the same thing. I mean, the wheels of government grind slowly for a reason. I mean, small incremental changes to, to our ordinance are probably a good idea. Scott, you want to say something?
So, to that point, the Coastal Commission has no argument that we have some portions of...
of our ordinance in the business and tax section, but their expectation is when you start regulating where they can go and the distances between them and those types of things, those are zoning issues and should be in the city's implementation plan. They've been very clear with that. So I think we would have a tough road to go if we didn't have those policies in it. Their expectation, based on every conversation that I've had with them, and it's been many, is that we'll have a vacation rental ordinance that's in our LCP. Now, I can see a scenario where we're not ready to adopt the vacation rental piece of this with the overall LCP and that's fine. I mean, if it takes us longer to get through it, that's okay. I mean, it's about getting the proper community input so we frame an ordinance that we can live with, right? So if we don't make it in the timeframe, then fine, we'll pull it out and process it separately. I don't think, I don't think that should be a consideration. But I do think we're going to have to have it in the LCP because they've been very clear in their assertion that I believe that's where it is and I think we'd be in for a challenge there if we didn't put it there. You know, we did need, we have a problem with certification is my guess as well.
Can we have it as an attachment or as an amendment to the LCP?
Their expectation is that it's going to be in the body. But again, my comment there is if we're not ready when everything else is ready, then fine, that value pulled out and we're still working on it and we can send that later as another amendment, that's okay. But their expectation, and they've been very clear on this subject, is that, you know, that's an area that's regulated, it's zoning policies and those are in your implementation plan and you need to have those there and they've been very clear. They don't have so much of an issue with some of the other pieces, you know, that are in our Title V. They just say you have to get a license for it and it has some of the, you know, you have to have the notice on the front door and the 24-hour contact and that stuff. You can have it in both places, they didn't seem to have as much of a problem with that. But the overall, like, what's the frequency, what's the density we're going to allow of these things, right, to Commissioner Lucas's comments is, you know, like, how many of them are, you know, how many are we going to allow that are hosted? Okay, we like hosted, so that was the example of Santa Cruz. They went and tried to make them only hosted and not allow the other ones and that didn't work. And so, which is okay, I mean, we might be able to come up with a policy for hosted and say buffer for hosted is 200 feet. And then separately, buffer for non-hosted is 500 and that's just, non-hosted is different. They're not the same, we're not buffering them from one another, they're running down separate paths. You can't really commingle them is what I was trying to get at there. If we do go down that road, then we probably do have, if we keep buffer, we'd have to have separate ones. So maybe those are two, the others are something else that I would want to get a little bit of input in from coastal.
I just want to reinforce, I agree with you because to me, the zoning and these documents set up, what are your reasonable expectations about living in Morro Bay? And my expectation certainly wasn't that I would have vacation rentals surrounding me. My expectation was I would know my neighbors even though most of them are gone six months out of the year from living there. But, you know, it's the expectation. Is it reasonable to assume if I'm in a multifamily area, perhaps there is a higher degree of rentals versus owners? And that's, that kind of goes with that. But this kind of, to me, it's an expectation that we want to serve visitors. How do we serve visitors? These zones are the ones we would like to see acquire these, these are the zones we'd like to see have fewer of them. I think that's a reasonable thing to say as an expectation of the community in bringing in guests from the outside.
I like to just kind of bounce off what Michael was saying. And I like what you're saying, I do. I like what, pulling that vacation rental thing out because you could see when the people showed up, you know, when I started looking at this, I go, oh, yeah, cruising through it. And it's like, oh, wow, you know, and then that's what hit. So if we pull that out, pull that out, give it a good, robust dialogue in what we're saying, what direction we're going, the public's aware of it, then we come back and have that discussion. And if it takes a little bit more time, like you said, so be it and we just push the other stuff through. I like that. That's all I want to tell you.
I mean, I don't want anybody to think that the city's trying to jam any of this down their throat. I, you know, I mean, I, once, I mean, it was really sort of illuminating once we got all the correspondence and it was almost split down the middle. People that were saying, hey, no, we want less regulation and other folks were going, no, we want more regulation. And so it was, I was like, wow, surprised that it was sort of split that as evenly as it was.
Before I jump back in, let's go. Jesse? Go ahead.
You're coming off guard.
Okay.
I just want to comment on Commissioner Lucas's comment. That idea of expectation goes directly to the complaint that we're hearing from so many people about the diminished quality of life. It's that expectation of what they thought they were buying into.
Did you want to say anything, Jesse?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Let me kind of go through my list of what I think are some of the key points and, you know, where I'm at right now with them. As far as transferability, you know, it's, I think it's a fairness issue if it's not transferable at sale, you know, and that's, you know, that's my view of it. I think it needs to be transferable, but with conditions and with review. If they're, if it's a, if they're a bad actor, you know, if they, if they're transferring from, you know, from parent to, you know, within the family, you know, that's, that's probably a lower level of review. But if you're transferring as sale and you're selling it as a vacation rental, you know, that is a, you know, that should be allowed with the review that you've been a good actor and you've been a good member of the community. If you're not a good member of the community, then I think that, at that point, there should be a clawback of the license, you know, that if there's been complaints, then I think that's when, that's when we can review the licenses and claw them back at that point. And that should be brought, that should be an item that is brought forward and, you know, in escrow and as a notification of potential buyers that this license is not automatically transferable. You know, so, and that should be awareness by the real estate agents that they need to notify their clients that that's their responsibility to make sure that that license is transferable so that they're, you know, because they're, quite frankly, there is a monetary value in that to certain people. So if we take that value away, take that ability away, it's a taking of a business or a taking of a property, so.
And my only comment with respect to that is the state in the form of Morro Bay's government is conveying this fairly substantially, you might even say enormous economic advantage when you take it over 10, 15, 20 or perhaps even 50 years in terms of being transferable. And a citizen who has not been able to acquire that advantage might justifiably say, why does that person get it instead of me? And the answer is because he went to the proverbial court steps first and got it. That's not really a persuasive answer for me.
That's what's happened, you know, and I'll argue that's what happens to a lot of businesses, say the lease is on the Embarcadero. The reason why they're, they're still transferable or they're still, their first shot they've got in transferring those leases is because they were there first. They were there 50 years ago or they were there 40 years ago. So, but if somebody is a good actor in the community, why should they be penalized to be put forward to a license to somebody that's a bad, that may be a bad actor and may cause more problems?
Well, to say they're being penalized is to really assume away that the situation, they're not being penalized. What we're saying is that this economic advantage is to be used for a set number of years so that other people can avail themselves of it. And the fact that in previous times we went the other direction might just indicate that we should try and do something differently this time. That's why I'm responding.
You know, I want to also bring up another issue, you know, as, you know, as we move, well, not other issue, it's the same, another perspective, okay? You know, the transferable, I, you know, I could see when, you know, your parents pass away and you inherit a house, I could see that, that's different. But our, when I look at neighborhood compatibility, okay, and as the dynamics of our community changes, okay, you know, like, I'll tell you right now, we've got a lot more grommets around our neighborhood than we had a little while ago, you know what I mean? And so when the community changes and having something transferable, it may not be compatible anymore. So I, it doesn't really, you know, the, as we know, the people that complain, you don't even get complaints. So it's not a good measure of, you know, if it is or not. And so that's why I think that, I kind of leaning toward not transferable.
But it would be transferable with a review. You'll have that, that's the point, that the license is reviewed to see if it's still compatible and if it still fits present use. I don't understand why you would take somebody that's been a good actor and strip them of this, of what they've been doing just to give it to somebody else that has no track record.
I can answer that by saying because the assumption is that the next actor is going to act similarly when that assumption can't be made.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to point number two. Okay. I think we ought to have, you know, in all of the licensing, there ought to be a limit to the number of cars that are allowed. And that, that should be a finable offense and it should be limited to the number of parking places that the property in the street can adequately hold without impacting the neighborhood too much. So, and I think that's a planning issue.
See, I disagree with that because we have people come forward here with houses that require two parking spaces and they're getting, we're getting waivers for the second car and some of these places are getting five cars in. So I think if they advertise something that requires a certain number, theoretically has a certain number of cars, that should limit, they should be able to have that on site. They shouldn't, they shouldn't, they should be able to house them or we should have something set up, the maximum number you can have outside of your garage is this. Otherwise we just flood the streets when there's these.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, to the number that it won't impact the street parking.
But then again, you know, we're saying this economic model, which is already the kind that's driving up prices and disadvantaging homeownership is driving, is getting an advantage that people who just want to renovate a house don't get in terms of parking.
I'm not following that because you're still going to be required, they can only rent this to, you know, to, that can only park certain number of cars that can be handled by the property. So, so they could, if, say they've got three parking, they've got three parking spots on site, you know, if somebody, if a renter comes up with five property, five cars and floods this, you know, and takes up more parking on the street, then that's a violation of their license and they could be, could be docked or their license could be taken from them at that point.
I guess to my way of thinking is if the homeowner has to have three cars, then that house can have three cars.
I agree with what Michael's saying and it all comes down to me, you know, enforceability. I mean, how are we going to enforce how many cars are at what house or who's where? I mean, and, you know, to say that, I mean, if we can't make a regulation that's enforceable, it's moot.
Right. I agree.
Could I also, on the parking issue, I think that, once again, in my mind, I'm looking at like overlay, okay? You take Beachcomber, right? Beachcomber, right there by the state park, it's super wide street. Man, you take some of those streets in North Morro Bay, it's a whole different ballgame. So that's why, it's like, maybe, that's why I was looking at little zones where you say, hey, you have a vacation rental in this area? Hey, man, you could only, like, what they rent, they're going to come in with a car or two, whatever. Over here, maybe you're a little more lenient. But I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all for our cities.
I mean, I don't think this is a difficult issue. I think we can set the number of parking spaces that you're required to have and you're required to have your cars parked on the site. You can't park your cars in the street. It's pretty simple. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I get where you're all going, I understand the concern. I think we just make it so you can't park on the street, make it explicit, and then we can look at what, you know, options we have available to, you know, what are the numbers that are okay. But I mean, it really is going to be limited to the parking that's on, that's on the site. And they need to demonstrate that, you know, their garage that they're calling two parking spaces is in a bar.
Okay. Okay.
That seems fair.
Okay. My next item is, you know, just to mention that, that, you know, vacation rentals do bring a lot of income into this city, both in TOT tax and then also in activity. They bring life to the city on the weekends, they support the bars and the venues that we have going and the festivals and, you know, so they're not the black cloud that a lot of people portray them, there are problems, but they also, quite frankly, that's the reason we've got Albertsons and a Spencer's the size that they are. Because our, a normal town this size wouldn't have those markets here if it wasn't for the people that come here on the weekends. And if you look at, if you look at people that are at the local markets on the weekend, there's a large percent of them there that are stocking up on Friday or on Saturday for their weekend here. And all you have to do is look at their license plates and you can tell. So they, this is an advantage to the city and we have to be cognizant of that and so we do have to share. So, but we also, you know, Michael and I know that on Labor Day and 4th of July weekend, you see houses that have never had a light on them, all of a sudden have five cars and parked in front of them for the whole weekend. And then when Monday comes, Tuesday morning, there isn't a car on the street. So not all of those are vacation rentals, a lot of them are second homes, you know, so how do you determine, I mean, this is what, this is part of what this town is. We have, we are a second, we have a large percentage of our homes are second homes. So, okay, that's my diatribe on that. So number four is 200 feet, you know, it's an arbitrary figure, I think it's fine, we're using that figure for a lot of things. I think it gives a buffer zone, but not, it's not exorbitant, it's not too restrictive. If you're caught inside that, you know, outside that or inside that limit and you can't, you can't get your vacation rental, you're going to think it's too restrictive. If you've got three or four of them right next door, you're going to think it's, I mean, so, so we've got to pick a number.
You know, that's, once again, the overlays, you know, if you have different areas, you can have 200 feet in one area and maybe something different in the other area. And, you know, and one of the things that, and I agree with you about vacation rentals, is not just like a paintbrush that something's bad. That's not, that's not true. However, you know, you talk about water conservation and you go to a vacation rental, those people are concerned with water conservation at that time. And so, you know, those are the kind of things that, you know, that's why I kind of go back to that, that surcharge.
Yeah, I would like to speak to the surcharge issue. Remember, everybody, they pay TOT.
Yeah.
Like hotels do. That's why they, that's a surcharge. We charge, we treat them in that manner, transient, we require them to pay transient occupancy tax. That tax is directly based on them having impacts to city services, that's why we charge it.
Which is exactly why we should do a better job of auditing and make sure we collect it.
Yeah. I don't disagree with that.
Jerry, with respect to the economic advantage and the cash that goes to the city, just occurred to me, the citizens in the neighborhoods that are most impacted would probably find it more agreeable if some sizable percentage of that revenue that comes from this activity would go back to them in the form of street maintenance or whatever. So maybe it wouldn't be so inconceivable to take Morro Bay and divide it into three or four areas on a map and say, you know, all this revenue from vacation rental in that area, 10% of it we're going to allocate to what we might not otherwise spend on tree planting and street repair and a few other things that are constant irritants to the people.
Of utilities.
Or something like that. But so they would feel, they would feel as though they are getting some advantage for some of the sacrifice that they're, were being asked.
Interesting, interesting point.
I really like that, what you just said.
Okay. Then, okay, so hosting and non-hosting, I think, I think having a bifurcated, you know, system on whether it's hosted or not hosting is important. I think we have a lot less problem with, we have more problem with the host, with the non-hosted than we do with the hosting.
My only issue with that became when, it seemed like some of our commenters were unclear on what actually hosted meant.
Right. I'll say this, it's probably because hosting means if you look at ordinances that have, you know, a separate section that talks- have, you know, a separate section that talks about hosted, it just means that the owner will, will be in the house six months out of the year. I've seen it like, sometimes it's that way, it's not like they're there permanently necessarily. So maybe they're there when the folks are there, maybe they're not. I mean, it seems like the folks here were occupying their space while their, while their rooms were being rented, but in some instances, that's not the case. And so I've seen, um, a lot of ordinances that pick up the different, differentiate between the two, but there's, you know, a limitation like that. The homeowner has to be there at least a certain number of months out of the year, um, you know, in order to do that, so they're not renting the whole house out and it's not just the de facto vacation rental that gets the, the better terms, as it were, um, as opposed to a regular vacation rental that has more strict terms or something.
And it's also an issue of enforcement too, how, how are we really going to enforce that? You know, so.
Yeah, how do you, how would you, how do you tell if somebody's there six months and, and not?
Which is why I'm not.
It's not, it's not as simple, so the more, here's the point that I was making earlier, the more, you can make the ordinance really complicated, it just becomes very difficult to enforce.
Right, right.
Um, so I mean, the, the more straightforward the ordinance you make, the easier it is to enforce.
Yeah.
You, you add a whole bunch of things in here that require us to figure out whether they're there six months out of the year or not, code enforcement is going to be spinning the wheels. Um, I mean, we can come up with just about any type of policy that you want, it's just, is it enforceable or not? Uh, you know, that's the, that's the, that's the art in what we're doing right now, right? You, you want to make it reasonable, you want to make it do the things that you want the ordinance to do, but you want it to be enforceable as well. And so some of the ordinances I've seen out there, I was like, wow, I don't know how those cities are going to enforce them. Hopefully they have lots of good enforcement folks because it's going to make them very busy.
This, this comes back to my next, my next point is I think this, I think the ordinance needs to have enough teeth in it that it's easily, it's, you know, it's easy for the city to, to verify the thing, you know, that they, they're having citations or they're having problems and it's, it's, the licenses can be readily clawed back and given, given, then given to the people that, that are next on the list, you know?
Can I just, Scott, bounce something off you right here? You know, the hosted thing, because in my mind, hosted means you're there, right? It can't be like not, you know, it can't be both, right?
The ordinance could be, so I'm sorry, the ordinance could be written that way.
Yeah.
Many of, most of the ones that I've seen are not written that way, they, they just specify a certain amount of the year that they're required to be there.
Okay, so like, could hosted mean, let's say, let's say I'm a professor at Cal Poly and I could afford a couple of houses in Morro Bay. And, um, I, I live in Morro Bay and then one of them is a vacation rental. Could that be considered hosted because you're, you're a resident?
It'll, hosted would be, you know, you, that's the address you're paying taxes from, that type of thing, so.
Okay, because Steve, that's kind of like, I think, a little more, we need clarity there.
That's where your mail is delivered, you know, those types of things.
Yeah, to me, hosted means you're renting one bedroom out of three.
Yeah, right.
Not the entire house.
Yeah.
Correct, and that's the, again, there's the art, right? It's, are they doing that or do, or when, every once in a while when they get an offer to have a whole family come and stay, they're like, hmm, yeah, I'm not going to hang out, I'm going to go over here, I'm going to go on vacation myself, let them have the whole house. It's, it's why I think the ordinances that I've seen for hosted ones have, you know, yeah, most of the year you're supposed to be there or six months out of the year, whatever the number is, um, but it allows them, yeah, a portion of the year not to be there and kind of operate as a regular vacation rental, um, in my opinion. I, I, it's interesting, I think maybe just because this is, this has become a prevalent issue more recently and so you see a lot of ordinances that have similar policies in them. It's unclear to me why it's that way.
I don't know, I'm sorry, Joe.
But maybe the, maybe the distinction would should be sort of physical, the distinction being someone who rents one room and someone who chooses to rent the entire house.
Yeah, and that's, that's usually described in the ordinances, um, it just, I, I found that it's, the hosted ones have that limitation in them and it doesn't mean that the, the owner's there at all times, although some were, some of the ordinances do say that, no, you have to be there. So that might be, I mean, we just say that and then we don't have to worry about it.
I know that in the, in the firearms industry and shooting, um, more and more of the transactions are required to be electronic, um, and it's an easy way to track if you're required to have electronic transactions. Everybody has, has a debit card these days, so.
You know, you, you know, and then just another point I want to bring up is that, you know, running an Airbnb is not an easy situation. So people, people typically fall out of the program. If, if, if you're trying to, if all of a sudden think it, you know, you're the innkeeper and you're having your life and everything and then you've got to make sure that it's clean and then people leave and you got to replace the towels or you got to, you know, I've, I've, I've seen it from people that have done it and stuff, it's not that easy of a job. And so we're going to get a natural turnover on these if, if we just keep it so that they need to have certain number of rentals that go through the city, that, you know, a baseline on the TOT so that, so that the city is getting their revenue out of it, they're going to roll over and they're going to fall out of the program. And so you're going to, you're going to see the turnover on that, you know? There's, there have been rentals here that have been, you know, we did a renovation on a house that, where, where the, the owner's grandfather built the house in 1910, the family had been living in there and every year, every summer, they rented it out since 1911. And so they had people, you know, and then, then they stay there in the winter. And so that's been, you know, ongoing, but that's a real rarity. I mean, these are, um, so, so I think, I think term limits and I think, you know, the transferability will get taken care of in the rollover and the ownership and the problem, and the problem of it, it, it's not as profitable as people think it is and it's not as easy as people think it is. So I think there's going to be a fallout and turnover from now.
We don't have any clause, is, are we sealed about there's no transferability laterally? Like, it's like, it's a license, you can't sell the license to somebody else on your block.
Correct, no, it's, it's attached to the property. And, and honestly, not giving me clear direction on the issue, so right now I'm not changing it. Uh, I'm, I'm leaving it the way that it is and that's, that it's not transferable. I need you, I need more heads nodding in that direction to say that it's going to be transferable. If you don't tell me that, I'm not going to change it.
Yeah, I think it should be transferable with review.
I do not, only an inheritance.
I believe in, no, no circumstances should be transferable.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting the no, so.
And it, and it shouldn't be a pro forma kind of examination, whereas somebody has the permit and we sort of look at a few things and say, yes, there's a pro forma approval, you, you can pass it on to the next buyer, no, I don't think so.
Okay. So again, just. Okay, I'm, I'm fine, I guess I, I was, you're talking to me, but I see all of the other heads nodding in agreement with you. So I was, just so I think. Be clear where we were going with that.
That's one to four then.
Yeah, exactly, so yeah, I need, I need at least two other heads bobbing in the same direction.
Okay, um, I, I don't know, I think we've covered most of the points. Are you, do you want to, you know, clarification on anything or?
So I, I do want to get to the clarification point, but are there more comments on what's been said? I don't want to, I realize I was jumping in and maybe you know.
Kind of off point, kind of not, um, code enforcement doesn't work on weekends and that's when we have vacation rentals. So, I mean, is there, anything we propose would have to have some sort of enforceability and some, some sort of, um, staff?
Yeah, you know, we, we get, normally the complaints will be generated from the weekend, but most of the stuff we're able to investigate, we, again, we don't get a whole lot of complaints. We're, we're coming up with regulations, getting out, you know, how comprehensive we make them or whatnot, it, it related to issues that we don't really have much of. Again, we get complaints about everything. Um, vacation rentals is just go way down at the bottom of the list, um, and I don't know why, again, don't know why that is, but that's, that's what happens, we don't get very many, so, um, the more complicated we make the ordinance, you know, the more difficult it becomes. Right now, we have a pretty easy time enforcing it, we're able to go out there, do the investigations, um, interview people, figure out what was going on, find out what the issue was, was there an issue? And then on the weekends, um, the way that it stands right now, you know, usually the biggest issue is noise, right? Well, you call the police for that and they come out and, and so then we find out whether there was a justification. So what happens is complaint comes in on Monday, code enforcement officer contacts the police department, say, if you go out there? Yep. Any issues? Nope. Or if there were, you know, what, what happened then? And so we go through that process, but normally they're not even violating the noise ordinance. Um, so that's been at least my experience in the, in the time that I've been with the city. I, I would like to get some, um, some clarification on the, the hosted versus non-hosted. Um, a couple of things, should we just be saying, hey, hosted means you're there whenever you're renting it out? That makes it easy. Um, hosted, different buffers for hosted versus regular vacation rentals? Not mixing the two, calling them two separate things, different buffers and, you know, these ones can go all over the city, but just 200 feet apart, these ones can go all over the city, but fill in the blank, buffer apart? Mixing them together is not going to be easy.
I have an idea, I mean, my idea would be if you're going to bifurcate them, um, it doesn't count for the 250, um, first of all, so the 250 is for non-hosted vacation rentals. And if we are going to bifurcate, they actually have to be there, they actually have to reside in there 348 days out of the year. I mean, they can go on vacation every once in a while, but they have to be there most of the time.
Maybe we, I mean, the, the simple way is to say, well, you have to be there while you're renting it out.
There you go.
Um, I think that's fair, um, and makes it simple. Um, I don't know how, again, I don't know how you do the things at some of the other ordinance I saw, I don't know how that's regulated very well, so. It seems if somebody's there telling you it's regulated and they're getting a special dispensation, meaning smaller buffers maybe, then I think it makes sense for them to be there.
The only, how do you, how do you regulate it? How do you enforce it?
I mean, we'll be able to do investigations, you know, I mean, most, so most of the ones that are, these types of things are not just over the weekend, they're Friday, Monday. And, you know, maybe over time as we are able, we might be, have more good enforcement staff or more hours available to them. Right now, we just have a limited amount.
My, my non-scientific, non-accurately checked study said 49 of those units are four or less. My guess is most of those are hosted and those produce about 196 out of that 1,700 capacity. So to me, those aren't, that's not the threshold. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to not even worrying about somebody who's got a room with two, counting against any limit or buffers, because your neighbors know you're there, you're there, that's what counts. What, what concerns me is the non-hosted vacant house rental. And then that, that, to me, I was almost wondering, well, what about that person who's there six months out of the year or, or two weekends a month, but then rents it out two weekends a month when they're back home in the valley or whatever? And that's, that's still a, a different kind of thing, but at least I know there's an owner there that I occasionally see and they know. The hard part's this intangible thing, it's not the crime, it's not even really the noise, it's the intangible thing that you don't know if that person's cleaning the house, robbing the house, there for two days, there for a night, a week, you don't know. You know, you never get to know them, it's a, it's a weird thing.
This is an interesting question, so the frequency we have there is four times a month, right? Do you want less frequency?
For the hosted, it wouldn't bother me whatever they want to do.
I mean, just saying for regular.
For the, for the non-hosted emptied thing, if, if somebody, if that's their second home, then they're not going to be renting it out a lot. They might be renting it out whatever, we had some comment, we had some correspondents about how often they, they rent it out to try to offset some bills and I can understand that. But again, that's somebody that you can identify as an owner, it's the, it's the third party managed thing that you never know the owner, who the owner is, it's an, it's an ambiguous thing that's run as a business. That's the one, if it's full all the time, it's having a bigger impact than if it's not full. That's the one where I think the buffer needs to be there.
So that's, that's kind of what I was also getting at is the frequency, I mean, some of the issues that you raised about these, I mean, all of you sort of picked up on this, is, is what it, what it makes the neighborhood feel like. And if it's a constant stream of different folks coming into the neighborhood, then it makes it feel different than, than a neighborhood that doesn't have that in it. So if the frequency of that is less, then maybe the feeling is also less. So you have the buffer which pushes them further apart, right? You don't have the, I, I know it's an impact in, down in Beachcomber and those track, and the beach tract over there because it's small streets and several of them located on it, I mean, I sort of get that. Um, so we could have less frequency, we could not have it four times, uh, you know, a, a month, we could have it two times a month, about three times a month. And we can limit the total number of days to 14 or something, so, so, because the one that has it four could just be booked week by week by week, because again, these typically book up for longer periods of time than, they have longer stays in, in vacation rentals typically than you do in, in hotel rooms.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I agree with Michael with regards to the hosted one, again, you know, if you're a hosted one, I look at, okay, this guy, he's keeping a pulse on how much water the guy's using, noise, there, not, there's going to be a problem. But then it's the, on the other extreme, it's the investor, a couple vacation rentals, you never see them, that, that would be the thing. So the buffer, as far as the hosted one?
So, okay, that's, that's perfect, so, of two of you saying hosted don't really care so much about the buffer, three of you sitting over here that haven't weighed in.
Well, you know, I, I was thinking, you know, I recall in, in Los Angeles where there's kind of analogous situation with filming and on a particularly attractive street, someone could rent out their house on a regular basis and, you know, he could, he could garner a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, and so they impose some, some rational restraints, you can rent out your, you can rent out your house 14 days a year, pick what you want to do. Uh, and I think it's kind of analogous here, but I'm also thinking, you know, I, I have this image of, you know, a nice retired couple and they're renting out a bedroom to a younger couple who wants to stay for a couple of days. Um, but I, you know, I, I wouldn't feel the same way for that couple running out, there's three spare bedrooms to, you know, six, six people and a baby. So, so, you know, I, it's all this stuff that you, you, every time you come up with a way to sort of settle it, you think of, oh God, well, there's, there's another exception that I didn't think of that could slip in here.
So, I mean, we can still have this, we can still have occupancy limitations like we do just in the ordinances that sit here right now, I mean, it's the, right now we have the two per bedroom and then plus two, that's sort of accommodate families with kids and things. So I'm saying we could apply a, a similar occupancy limitation to the hosted as well.
Well, no, but my, my, if we're contemplating really not having any distance limitations for the hosted one, I think that sort of came up, because we don't think that one or two people sharing a spare bedroom would be much of a problem. But if it turns out that with a hosted homeowner, you have a bunch of people in the various bedrooms, then you've, you know, created this very problem that we're trying to avoid. You, you could have a lot of, you could have a lot of hosted houses in a particular area with significantly more than two people in a house. I realize it might be unrealist.
No, my point, my point there is just remember what you're saying is you like hosted because somebody's there to watch what's going on. Theoretically though, so if you had more people in there, but we have occupancy limitations on it, meaning one of the bedrooms is, is associated with the owner, and then you have other ones that would be for this, but that person's there monitoring them, so we shouldn't be having the problem.
Well, my response would be, again, that goes to, to nuisance or illegality, but not to Commissioner Lucas's notion of the diminished quality of life and the expectations, we would, it would still violate that.
I would be in, I would support reduced buffers. I, I'm concerned about enforceability, um, if we can implement some sort of technological or use, implement technology to have better reporting, I would be able, I would be more in favor of, of, uh, less restrictions.
Okay.
If, if we were to mandate some sort of electronic transactions, you, you have to use, uh, one of the platforms, Airbnb as an example, I mean, I'm sure there's more than, than Airbnb, you have to use one of those platforms to, to rent your rooms and you're only allowed to do it five days out of the month. That, then I would be in favor of reduced restrictions. And I don't know that that's enforceable.
I mean, we'll, we'll be able, so when we pick up these into the audit process, we'll be fine. I, you know, we'll be able to get all of their information. They'll, they'll be signing on and agreeing to giving it, giving that to us through the application process.
I think, okay. In principle, the hosted, the, would be less problematic, I think they'd be less problematic. But what, if you look at it as they're renting a bedroom, they're staying in the three bedrooms and they're renting the one bedroom, that's, you know, off the, off the side, but isn't an ADU. But if they're staying in the ADU and they're renting out the five bedroom house, then it's a different issue. So, so I think it's, you know, if, if there's a number of bedrooms that are, or a number of occupants that would be allowed in the hosted to, to, to get the, the buffer, to recent, you know, to eliminate the buffer. So I'm, I, you know, I'd say let's just keep the buffer on all of them and then allow them to, allow them to run their business if it's, if that's what, you know, that's what it is. So, I think it's. So, I think it's just getting too much into, we're having too much trouble splitting the baby here, and we're gonna have trouble with enforcement, so.
Well, I mean, what if, I mean, if we kept it really simple and said, okay, no, no buffers if you're, if you're hosted, meaning you live there, and you're only renting your house out to two people in a bedroom, just, that's it. In any other circumstance, you know, we, we have the buffer.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're getting too complicated, let's, I, I'm not, no, I'm not saying that, I mean, we can go look at, at, at options that are out there, I, you know, I mean, I would.
My biggest, my biggest concern is the 88 units that are six guests or, or less, and the 63 that are eight. So, that's, that's, that's 140, that's over half of the units are six or eight guests. That's where the problem starts to show up, that's where the cars start to show up, that's where, it's the bachelorette or bachelor party group, you know. The 14 is probably, still, I know there was a bachelorette party in ours a couple weeks ago, but they were all right, they were okay. We, we had our sensors up, but they were okay. But it's usually families, and the families aren't necessarily bad, it's just you don't ever see them again.
Yeah, well, I think we're really getting a problem, is a situation like on Beach Comer, where we're having seven out of the 10 homes are vacation rentals. There's no neighborhood left, and I think, you know, and you're, there are five-bedroom homes, and they're, they're on the, they're on the beach, and they're readily rentable, and, you know, they're actually, I wouldn't mind staying down there, the reality, but, you know, I think, I think that's, that's where the restrictions should be applied, and, you know. So, I, I'd like to keep it as simple as possible, and not, you know, and either allow the buffers, or if we're gonna allow hosted, hosted to have special privileges, then they can only rent it out four days out of the month, or eight days out of the month or something, and they can only rent out one bedroom. You know, so, with, so, I don't know if that gives you any clarity at all.
Not really.
Yeah, I know.
So, we, so I think you prefer hosted, you want occupancy limitations, so we don't have the host and 10 people staying in the house.
Right.
So, I need to come up with something that's less than that, I'm gonna come up with something that's less than that. We'll place parking requirements on it like we will for the vacation rentals, we won't have a buffer, it'll be something we bring back, but we'll vet through the thing that we're gonna have on the 20th, and I'll bring it back to you, you know, after that, so you've seen it once, it's gotten some public input on top of it, you guys are certainly free to come. And, and we'll work it back that way, okay? All right, I need to, I wanna, we've talked about a lot of things, and now we need to start putting some things down on paper that might work. So, buffer for the vacation rentals, though we want that, do we want, is the 200 good? Do we want 250? Start getting much more than that, I have a feeling we're gonna get pushed back from coastal.
You're gonna cap, you're talking cap or feet? Units or feet?
Oh, sorry, license, yeah, the buffer would be, for those, would be 200, you want, you want larger buffers for those? Or do we wanna just limit the number of stays? You know, that, you know, we could have no more than two stays, maximum 14 days, that's, that means half the time at least out of the month, that thing's not occupied, you know, versus right now, we have it four time, four occupancies, that literally during the peak of the summer, it could be week-long occupancy, so it's just constantly occupied, minus when they clean it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think a, a buffer of, you know, of limits, you know, 200 feet, we use that number a lot, you know, and so I don't have a problem with it. And I think it's just, you know, I like Richard's idea of, of by zone, but I think that's getting too complicated. You know, I, I think to go through zone by zone, you know, and say that, okay, in the heights, it needs to be 700 feet, 'cause those, those properties are quarter-acre properties, you know. But, you know, and then in the, in the flats, it's, you know, it's 20 feet or 40 feet, because those properties are only 15 or 25 feet across, you know. I think we just keep it 200 feet throughout.
And, and, can't believe I'm saying this, but, and my response would be, I, you know, I think it's a lot easier to liberalize something when you realize that the, that the problem you were contemplating doesn't really happen, than to go the other way. So, I would say, make the distances greater, and the times available in, in a month or a year smaller, and then you can revisit it when you're sure that there aren't, again, these unintended consequences that you're trying to avoid. So, I would opt for, I guess.
So, let's take them one at a time. So, frequency of occupancy, right now, it's four times a month. Do you wanna cut it in half, a few times a month, but, but allow a maximum of 14 days? So, you could have somebody in there for a week or two if they wanted longer rentals? Do you want them three ti, three times a week, maximum of 14 days?
Four sounds good to me.
You're fine with four times?
I'm fine with four times, as long as we have the buffer, okay?
To me, the biggest, the biggest, most persuasive thing of any of the things we heard, and I think it was in the correspondence, I don't think anybody said it here, are the people who were talking about, if we, if we disenfranchise renting it out to a family, if we take it off the market in order to do a vacation rental, I think we've gone backwards. We should, we should be trying to incentivize renting it out full-time to a family, not incentivize vacation rentals. So, I'm against anything that makes this more attractive to do. And I'm pretty much for anything that says, rent it to somebody full-time. And that, that would be my, my general piece, is we've taken 250 units potentially off the, off the rental market. I don't know how many of those are, actually were, the hosted ones obviously have a home, and the ones that are second homes, that they're only doing this few times, but I don't know how many of those there are. But it, it, it seems to me, especially the things we heard at the planning academy, coming down about housing, people are angry about the third floor. Okay, where's the housing gonna be? Well, they're angry about filling in the downtown, where's the housing gonna be? Well, housing could be here, where we're taking a home and having it vacant half the time, because we're not, renting it to a family, or, or a homeowner.
That's spot-on, right there. And so, we, you know, when, when we look at, you know, I kinda keep going to the, we shouldn't, I think, like he said, incentivize it to the point where it's like, too attractive, but at this, that's why I like the overlays, you know, that's why I like that. How mu, let me ask you something, how complicated would that be for you to like, take a look at?
Well, what's the parameter for the overlay? I don't think, okay, so.
The parameter would be maybe street width.
Yeah, so, so here's, here's the issue, so the street width doesn't matter, because you're not parking on the street, so.
Or, how about lot size?
Doesn't matter anyway, 'cause it has to do with the number of bedrooms and the parking spaces on the site, you remember? I mean, so, so, the, the question about us applying a one-size-fits-all is fine, because we apply the same standard to everybody, you know? I mean, so, that's what I'm saying, I think that, I don't know that, I don't know that overlays could work if we had a neighborhood over here where we wanted to encourage them, and one over here where we didn't wanna have them. But I think largely, it's the same thing, like, I don't think we wanna have a multifamily neighborhood and go, oh, we should have more there, because then you can have an apartment building that gets, that gets converted entirely to vacation rental, do you want that? No. That's not anything that we want, I mean, that goes directly to what Commissioner Lucas was saying, I mean, we wanna make sure that doesn't happen, I think. So, the question is, I mean, so, again, don't wanna incentivize it, understand that. I have a couple of you saying, yeah, it's fine, four times a week, yeah, four times a month with, with no daytime, no day limitation. Others saying, no, it'd be good to have that, so, I mean, they need to get a little bit of a consensus there.
Let me bring up, let me comp, compound this once, once more. You know, a lot of the vacation rentals too are used for, for people moving into this area that are trying to get established in the area too. They just got a job, or they're just looking for a job, or, you know, they come here and they stay in the vacation rental, and, you know, they're going to be relocating and stuff too, so if we limit the number of, if we limit the number of stays too much, we're, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot on that.
I think if you have the buffer at the right distance, I'd encourage the thing to be rented, because you want the money coming in to the city. But, I, you have to watch that buffer, every fifth house thing is, is kinda spooky. I'm not sure I even have that many in, in my area right now, I'm sure it sounds like from that map, there's a lot of towns, part of the town that already weigh over that.
Yeah, I mean, you see from the map that there's, there's saturation there, and what I was saying before is, if you dispersed them equally to make them outside, so all of them were at that 200-foot buffer, it would take out all the residential neighborhoods, which, which, again, gets me to the point that I don't think we have capacity for 200 vacation rentals at a buffer of 200. Because a lot of those, some of those vacation rentals that are shown on that map are in commercial areas.
Well, if you have a buffer and the cap, it doesn't matter if you ever get to the cap, the buffer is, is, is lessening the impact, and that way.
That's what I was, that's what I'm trying to say, maybe everybody's like, worried about having so many of them, I said, you know, once this starts playing out over time, I, I think we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't want to worry so much about how many of them, there'll be less than the 250, so we'll be in the area, you have the 200-ish or something, I don't know whether, you know, I mean, looking, just looking at the map.
And it also occurs to me that, if we impose the 200 to 250-foot boundary, and we do something liberal like four times a month, i- if that's really upsetting a whole lot of the citizenry, we're gonna find out about it in short order, and then it'll come before us to reduce that, so.
Yeah. This is almost like, you know, like we, we did with the design guidelines, it almost like, if we could do a year, you know, try to put the training wheels on and try this for a year, you know?
I mean, we'll be able to change the ordinance over time if we need to.
Okay.
Especially, it'll be easier, especially, once we get this thing adopted and certified, because then we'll have a newly certified document, so changing things to it, you know, raises less red flags with the commission, 'cause when we're just looking at the policies, a lot of times they, they're like, they don't like the policies that are in there, that are associated with it, things like that.
Would it be a general plan amendment to actually change it?
Yeah, general plan and local postal program, and the implementation, would it be the implementation plan, this is, this isn't zoning. So, it should be the zoning code amendment with implementation plan, which is part of the LCP, so it goes the process.
Well, I'll, I'll throw a number out here, how about like 300 feet?
That seems high to me.
I'm good with a cap and 200 feet, that's.
I concur. I think 250 feet is, is very safe, like, like, again, like I said before, I, they would be hard-pressed to, to say that was unreasonable, if 200 is a safe harbor.
If you grandfather all of those, we're not, never gonna get our buffer.
It's one of the issues. But I mean, I didn't hear any of you telling me not to do that.
How do you take somebody's property away from them?
Yeah. Again, it would have to be an affirmative decision by the commission to direct us to say, hit the restart button when we adopt the ordinance. I mean, there's a, a lot of moving parts to that, and there's, again, there is at least 170 of those folks that came in, bought property, did all of those things, like, I'm compliant, right? Yep, okay, here you go, and that pulls the rug out, which is, which is, which, you know, anybody that came in after that, not a problem, because the, when we adopted the moratorium, there were findings in that, and so theoretically, they could've seen that and said, eh, there are no guarantees. But, the existing folk came in, and they did think that, so I would think that's a, that's a decision point in your process of, you know, liberation.
Well, I think that's why we need a fairly hair-trigger on a clawback agreement, you know, arrangement, so that if, if we have problem situations, that it's easy for the city to, to, you know, give them a, you know, a slap, you know, stern warning, and next time this happens, you, your license is revoked, and it goes to the next person on the list.
So, do we want to increase penalties then? I've heard you, a few of you say that.
Yeah.
And then, a, a shorter patience period on the city's part in, in revoking.
Yes.
Okay. We can do that, I'm seeing most of you nod your head there, so.
Yeah, well, I, in fact, I even mentioned the greater punitive measure, but I'll also say, I doubt if any of the people who now rents their entire home on a regular basis, when they bought the home, thought to themselves, I have absolute assurance that this ability of mine, this permit, is going to continue on ad infinitum. I don't think so. I think they were, I think they.
I would imagine, I would imagine they do think that.
I've got a, I've got a case in point.
Well, let me finish. The, the practicality of knowing, of knowing the problems associated with that, and, and the opinions of a certain segment of the population, I think creates certain doubts. Certainly, it's, there's a controversy there when you buy that house, knowing whether you'll be able to do it forever and ever.
Joseph, there is a, there is a financial incentive attached to that, to the home, like having it in a good school district, like having it in a, you know, in a view, have a great view, like having it close to downtown Milwaukee, this is a factor in the cost of pricing of a home, and people do, do have that in mind for different circumstances, that this is part of the viability of this property, but it's in a residential area.
No, I, I understand the advantage, and I, I understand the advantage and the calculation they're making, but, like in any investment, there is a certain risk associated with that investment, and what I'm saying to myself is, I always put myself in, in that situation, were I to buy a house with the intention of renting it out on a very frequent basis, I would know in the back of my head that there was a certain risk, that sometime in the future, I might not be able to do that.
Well, it'd be the same as if you're buying a house for a long-term rental. You know, you're buying it, that's, that's allowed in the residential zone, it's a, you know, it's a, you're buying the house, you're not gonna live there, but you're gonna rent it out for a year, and then maybe move here.
But what I would say to my sponsor of that is, but renting a house is a long, settled notion, and what we're dealing with here is really a very new concept, relatively new concept, and so it's not so settled.
I, I think an analogy that's a little closer is like, when my wife was a kid, they, you know, their parents bought a house in a certain area, expected to go to a certain school, and then, all of a sudden, they had a busing program, and she got bused to another area, okay? So, those are kinda like, whoa, didn't see that one coming. But I think what Joe's saying is valid, I think that there is, you know, a certain, certain amount of risk involved, because you are commercializing a residential area, a residential zone.
Okay. I agree, but I don't know if we've even touched on what Scott was asking. Scott, do you wanna?
Bring us back to point, Scott. I'm sorry, was there a question? We were going over some of the points.
So, you, oh, just kinda bringing us back, so you had initially asked us the question of, do we wanna grandfather these in, and I think we went way somewhere else, but.
You, you did jump off the track a little, uh, so, so, yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't get the, I didn't, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a decision point, right? Like, none of you have said that to me, and so, if you want to do that, you should say that. And we'd have to look and see what that looks like, and, you know, look at ordinance, otherwise the idea would be to allow them, and then, you know, go through the process as they turn over, and, 'cause we're not gonna, we're not gonna transfer them right now, anyway, so, as that one came up and was sold or what have you, then that would, license would come back into the fold, and then it wouldn't be reissued in that location if it were an issue with the buffer, say.
In fact, may propose, it seems to me, if we, if we grandfathered everybody that's currently in this, in the program, leave them, leave them be, and if you aren't actively renting your vacation rental for the, you know, 12 months previous, you're automatically excluded, and you have to reapply, and by attrition, this should take care of itself in a couple of years.
So, so that would be a good thing for us to put in here, I, I agree with that, we, I'd like to get some head nods on that too, is that if you're not using it, you know.
Use it or lose it.
Yeah, if you're not using it at least 20 days out of the year, or what have you, then you lose it, I, that was an arbitrary number.
Let's, you know, maybe pick a third of the time that it's available for rent, you know, if we have, you know.
Well, I mean, some, some things had come up before, that we only wanted to allow them to rent it out 30 days out of the year.
Right, that's what I mean.
So, it was like, maybe the ma, so they have to gen, they have to demonstrate that they've rented it out for at least two weeks out of the year to qualify, or what have you.
It could be that if the buffer isn't achievable, there is a rental cap on the amount of time that you can have it rented out, until other people leave the market, and then, as those people leave the market, you could say, the buffer's been achieved, you are therefore able to rent it out to a higher level. Because it's the impact.
But that, that seems to me to say that, in, in the areas of greater concern, we're currently, well, for sake of an argument, it's too dense in terms of the population of vacation rentals, it really leaves the people in those communities who are complaining with really no hope for the, for the future, or even the short term, or even the midterm, because, because if we grandfather them in, they're gonna stay there a while, maybe a great while.
But how do we pick and choose which ones to deny?
So, so, that's why I mentioned earlier, this, it's a, it's a fairness notion, and I, to the annoyance of my wife, I spent a great deal of time yesterday and today trying to think about it, and that's the only thing I could come up with, was this notion of placing a set number of years on the permit, so it expires, and they go to the back of the list, and I realize, maybe someone who is a very conscientious landlord is replaced by somebody who's not quite as conscientious, but nevertheless, the fairness is accomplished, and we eliminate this. But nevertheless, the fairness is accomplished and we eliminate this density of these things as they exist now. And that's really what people want to get at.
Do you want, I mean, we were, that's what we were actually talking about with an amortization schedule. So do you want that?
One of our citizens proposed a three-year window.
So that's what I'm saying. Do you, do you want that?
I'm okay with that.
I don't think the citizens want that.
I think it's the least bad idea. I like it. I like, in fact, I, I wouldn't be opposed to just hitting the reset button on it, because we're establishing new rules. And the general plan update, this was part of that, part of that whole thing. So I'm not opposed to that, because that way, what, what it'll, what it'll do is it'll maybe have, open up the rental market, the long-term rental market, for people to start thinking that way. You know, saying, hey, maybe, we got a problem here, maybe we could look at it that way. So it'll incentivize maybe that.
Probably incentivize long-term.
Yeah.
You're gonna have a two, to reset, you're gonna have 250 people. All quietly, you get a re-permit stack and it won't be lethal.
Right.
Who do you choose?
How do you choose?
You cannot have a fair, I, you know, that's the-
How long? Three years or two?
Well-
It's around what you want to do.
Well, that's why I say we grandfather it in. And then the people, the people who are bad actors will be lost according to attrition, because they've, they've gone afoul, rented it too many times to too many partyers and created too much of an impact on the neighborhood. So, so they have, they are the ones that are going to be punished instead of the people that are acting in good faith. So that's all.
The problem with that is, I think Scott hit it on the head. I mean, that doesn't really occur. We don't really have penalties and we don't really have complaints to that, to where we're revoking licenses.
Well, that's where we need to, we, you know, if, if the people that have, came in with the impacts, say that, that they're happening in their neighborhood, if they have a reason to call, then, then they'll call if it's a problem. If it's not a problem, then they won't call. So then it's not a problem having those in the neighborhood. So that's my logic.
And we put the signs up.
There are people who, I believe, I'm not saying it's too noisy or I can't find a place to park in my neighborhood.
They're, they're not saying it's too noisy or I can't find a place to park. They're, they're just complaining about the diminished quality of life, and that's not what their expectation was when they bought the house. And we're saying to them now, you gotta wait till those people decide to leave.
But what they are saying is that there's 10 cars parked on the street and they can't get down the street.
No, I think there are other, there are other dissatisfaction.
There's a lot of variables. There's traffic, there's, there's a lot of other variables. I, I, you know, I'll take that, what, cut off back, that three, three-year limit does sound good to me.
Okay, I think we need to wrap this up. It's almost nine o'clock, so I think we need to take a break. Do you have any, where are we?
So I would like to go through some of these items that are at least in the ordinance and get clear direction.
Okay, let, well, you guys want to take a five minutes?
You guys want to take a break for a second and then-
Or do you want to go through the items and we'll get, we'll go yea or nay on all of them? Scott, are you ready to go through the list?
So buffer, I've, I think we've whittled it down to, we're gonna apply it to vacation rentals, not hosted.
Right.
200, 250, or 200, 250 and 300. So I, I need a, I need a number.
Okay, 200 for me. 200.
250.
For the, for the non-hosted, I'd go to 250.
225, there it is.
So we got, we have three at 250, so. So this is what, and so the good thing is, we're gonna vet this, we're gonna put it together and we'll vet it through our next outreach. So you'll get input, right? That's, that's what we're gonna do, so.
Okay, next item.
So we're gonna be, we're gonna require all parking onsite, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we gonna, what are, what are parking regulations gonna be for that? One per bedroom?
That will be in citywide, so we'll hold on that.
Okay, and is parking gonna be allowed in setbacks?
We'll hold on that, too. Right now, let's just focus on it being onsite, I think is what we can all agree on tonight.
Yeah, I mean, we have to deal with the overall parking requirements and so we'll, we'll get ones that apply to this as well, so.
Okay. And are we gonna have a limitation on number of cars that are gonna be allowed in the, on the rental, you know, so that, so that that's a violation if it's, if it's over?
Yes, that's exactly the, that's the intent. You have to, you have the X number of cars that you're allowed to have, that's it.
Okay.
And so tenancies, it seemed like most of you were saying, okay, with four per month.
Yeah.
I saw a majority of you nodding your head then.
But that doesn't limit the duration of any of your tenancies.
And so that's a separate question. So we good with four tenancies?
Four. I'm good with four.
This is for the non-hosted.
Non-hosted.
The hosted, if somebody wants to do it as many, few times as possible, I'm not worried about that.
I think probably not gonna worry about that, because the idea is that hosted has somebody there watching over it, so it's being a better friend to the neighborhood.
Non-hosted, yeah, I like four.
Okay, so, four. We want to limit the number of days. I would start at 14 and go to 21.
Or do we go yearly?
Total, oh, total for the whole thing? I was just saying for a month.
Yeah, I'm thinking, because there's gonna be some months where they're gonna, it's, it's going to be more economical or it's gonna be better for them to rent out during the, during the summer than it is gonna be during the winter. So if we give them a yearly total rather than a monthly total, then, you know, we get our town back in the winter.
But that's the standard of deviation and variances when you start doing that that way, to get extreme. I think yearly is a little bit wide. I think we should-
Well, we're gonna have our deviations on the weekend to the weekday, anyway.
Yeah, but if you stretch them out over, over that period of time, it'll impact our, impact our-
All right, let's, let's take it for one month. So let's, let's look at it a month. Okay, and we can extrapolate it over a year, if we need to. So are we comfortable with four tenancies that fill up the rental for the entire month of July?
No.
I'm coming back to the person that wants to, you know, is looking through here for relocation.
I believe you telling me, no, that's not what you, that was not the intent, so. So, yeah, so do we want to pull it back and have it be-
I'm on the fence with this, because if it's, if the buffer is met-
Right.
I don't care. If it's not buffered, then I think it's an impact. Having, having 1,700 people all at one time is, is an impact. Because there ain't 1,700 people in those houses if it's families. It's half that.
I'm gonna say 21. That's, that's my gut.
And, and again, my thought was better to be conservative and then adjust it when there's no problem, but you're telling me that that would still involve a really complex amendment to the coastal commission's authority.
No, I mean, if we, if we, this is, you say four tenancies, we could have just left it at that, but I mean, that, you're gonna have some that could be occupied all the time. And I didn't get the feeling from the comments that you made that that was what you wanted. And so I was like, we should probably have it be something less. And so, that's why I threw out, okay, how about 21 days maximum? You know, add a, you know, with, with, over the four tenancies, so that the thing is vacant sometimes. It's gonna have to be vacant. Sometimes I assume they're gonna clean it between tenancies.
I don't really think it's gonna be an issue. At $3,200 a week, I don't think they're gonna run it at 21 days a month, anyway.
Again, I would, I would opt for 14 and see if it's a problem. If it's not a problem, raise the limit.
I have one for 14. Do you have anybody else for 14?
I, I like that.
Anybody else?
No.
21. I have two, it seems like okay on 21?
No.
No, I have one for 21.
I'm, you know, if we've got the buffer, and if we've got the, the number of cars, I'm, I'm-
I'm good if it's a-
I'm gonna change my vote to that.
All right, so how about this? So we have ones that are non-conforming. If we're gonna allow them, do we have non-conforming ones? They're limited to 14?
Well, if they're not-
And compliant ones?
I'm gonna change my vote to them, because if it's, if, the market's gonna take care of it. It's not gonna be rented 30 days a month, anyway, so.
Yeah, and if it's non-conforming, they're gonna be out of compliance and they're gonna get complaints and they're gonna, they're gonna lose their license.
And then, but I'm just gonna remind the, the commission that there are always unintended consequences. Things just don't, they don't come out the way you plan or hope they would. That's why I think the best course is to be conservative.
So, number of tenants? We have it at two per bedroom, plus two?
That's, I'm good with that.
Where did the plus two come from?
It's, it's one you frequently see, but it deals with families with children.
Babies, yeah.
We have two, we have a lot, as you're aware, we have a lot of two-bedroom, one-bath houses in town. And so it would allow for a couple of adults and a couple of kids.
Then, then it, then it should be two adults per bedroom plus minors. Because I, I know, I'd want to avoid, I'd want to avoid two adults sleeping on couches in the living room or in sleeping bags.
I would want to avoid 10 kids. I mean, I mean, quite frankly, if you have two adults per bedroom and then 10 kids, that's 14 people, I mean, in a two-bedroom, that's, that seems excessive. So two plus two plus an extra two, that seems reasonable.
This, this is quite so difficult to figure this out on a, you know, on an ad hoc basis right now. You gotta think about these things, but we don't want adults sleeping in the living room on couches while their friends are sleeping in the bedrooms. So that there's eight adults in the house. I know I don't want that.
I don't see anybody agreeing with you.
I'm, I'm all for getting rid of the plus two. Two adults per bedroom, two people per bedroom.
I'm good with a two, two plus two.
I am as well.
Two in each bedroom, that's it.
Okay. All right, Richard, you're gonna have to weigh in.
You're the, you're the deciding vote. Do you want to have kids in this town?
You know, and remember, remember, we'll get input on it.
Yeah, yeah. So you know, one of the things, I was reading amongst comments, instead of going by bedroom, one of the, one of the comments was talking about going by bathrooms instead.
I have no comments.
No, okay, forget that, okay.
Yea or nay?
Two, two adults per bedroom. Or two per bedroom.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're not doing transfer upon sale?
I'm good with transfer upon sale, with a review.
I got three of you nodding your head, no.
Absolutely not.
Not transferable.
No, no transferable.
I lost on that one.
But, but I was in favor of inheritance. I mean, if, if somebody was to pass away, I mean, I think it's, it would be very unfair to-
Fair point. Rest of you?
Well, I was going for the whole ball of wax, but of course I would-
So you got, you got two there?
No, I'll, I'll be consistent, no. No transferability in any circumstance.
I got another now. Rich? I'm picking on Richard right now.
I, I think, I, I would go if it would be in the event of death and transferable on to, if we're having that three-year limit, right?
I haven't got there yet. Don't get me wrong.
Okay, okay, okay.
So we did have a couple of folks mention the, you know, we have the sign posted in front, but it's not legible. We want to have bigger signs?
Bigger signs.
Something not, you know?
Your sign.
I keep hearing Maui, so Maui sounds like they have their act together, so.
Then we might go with a bigger sign and then one that sticks out so you can see it. It's a little bit brighter of a color or something, so it's not just white and blends with the background.
And can we set up a, you know, a, a database with contact numbers through the, through the city planning?
Our ordinance already requires them to submit that to existing ordinance, requires them to give us the 24-hour contact person.
And do we have, do we have that listed on our city website that could be-
We don't currently.
Could be accessed on the weekend for somebody who wants to call, you know, call that number and then be able to call the cops or call that access number?
Not a bad, not a bad idea. We should probably end up with a vacation-
Because that's where everything's going, everything's going on the-
And email, so we can send pictures. Pictures are worth a thousand words.
We'll put a contact with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay. Stronger revocation, okay, so, so the current revocation process is like five steps long. I was gonna make it three. Initial fee, a thousand, second fee, 1,500, and then revocation.
I'm not in favor of money-making entity here. I mean, I don't know if, I mean, revocation of the permit sounds like a good, a good tool, but I don't know if I'm in favor of money-making and the fines.
It's actually, it actually wouldn't even cover the time it takes us to investigate.
Yeah, I think it's a payback of, of-
The fees that we have now, that's 100 bucks, doesn't really do anything. I mean, that means nothing.
Yeah, they, they, it should be punitive and should be some incentive to do the right thing rather than the wrong thing.
I would, I mean, I, people brought this up regularly and I agree with them. I don't think that our, our fine structure is a disincentive. You know, I mean, I don't think 100 bucks does anything. It's initially a warning letter that goes out to, so probably still, I think our ordinance requires us to have that, so there would be warning process, then those two fees, then revocation. So it's actually be a four-step process, sorry.
And if those fees aren't paid, you know, within 30 days or whatever the time period, then they have a revocation of license automatically.
Correct.
And these would obviously be not just complaints, but found complaints?
Yeah, we would invalidate them, yeah. Like I mentioned to you before, we've gotten complaints and then found that there was no violation. So, not gonna just fine you randomly.
So, so we're clear. You're talking about fines, right? We're talking 1,500, is that what you said?
I think it was, I think it's a thousand, 1,500 revocation. But they're actually, we actually have to send a warning letter first. We can't, our ordinance doesn't allow us to fine them without that.
Okay.
I can do a little research into that to see if we could change that part of it, but I don't know that we can.
Yeah, I would-
It's written in a couple of different sections of the municipal outside.
You know, I, I would like to see, you get a warning, okay? Shine it, you get a fine thing, bam, get rid of the permit.
So is that over a 12-month period?
I would say 24.
24 months?
A thousand seems harsh.
Thousand doesn't seem enough.
Again, we're, we're dealing, for lack of a better word, from such a position of ignorance in terms of the facts and quantities and all that. But I, you know, I, $3,000 a month, $3,000 a week for some of these nice-
But that's, yeah, that's some of them.
So what, so I think, you know, fine is better to sort of commensurate with the So, I think, you know, a fine is better to sort of commensurate with the kind of money they're taking in to have any effect at all.
Well, I mean, I think the warning process is, hey, there's the shot across your path. Look, we found you to be in violation. You do it again in a 24-month period, we're going to fine you. And so the next time it happens, you automatically get the fine. So you've been, I mean, you've been warned, and you need to be operating your vacation rental in a responsible manner. And if you're not, okay, now you're becoming a problem for us, and then we would, you know, ratchet it up for, we could just do fine once and then revocation here. I mean, it's kind of...
You know, I worked in the hotel industry doing project management and stuff, but, you know, and then you have bad actors come in that fool you all the time. So, you have bad actors come in, you know, well, just, you know, for instance, you know, locally, somebody said that there was going to be two people in the house, and they're, you know, I drove by the house, you know, that was rented, and there were eight, you know, eight cars, and, you know, and so you don't have complete control on how things develop. So, you know, there has to be a little bit of grace, but if there's a continual problem, then you're not taken care of the way it is. So, you know, I think, you know, the warning letter, you know, the first fine, I think it's fine, but we've got to remember that the people that own these houses and are renting them out don't have complete control of how it ends up that the people, who's staying there. So...
Well, remember, there's processes built into the code that allows people to make a complaint to the property management company, and the property management company to go solve it. That's not a violation.
Yeah.
That's them being compliant. You know, if somebody called and complained and said, hey, they were being noisy, and then we called the vacation rental management company, and they came over here and made them be quiet, that's compliant. That's not not compliant.
Okay.
I think if they weren't, if they didn't do those things, and they weren't managing their property correctly, then that's a violation. You know, remember, it's set up, and it gives processes. We need to follow those. That's the violation. It's not that, you know, the process worked because the tenants were kind of being, deals with the unruly ones, you know, I mean, as long as they get compliance with it, that's great. But if they don't do that, then that's when, that's when we need to have the next, we need to ratchet it up a little, right?
Yeah. I think we've got to remember that the people that are renting these out, you know, I'm getting a feeling that we're vilifying them. And I don't think, I don't, I don't think they're all bad people. So let's just keep that in mind, too. That's all I'm saying.
No, I don't feel that, dude. It's just a public conversation.
So, are we okay with that? Mostly, okay?
What is it we're okay with, again?
So, it's, so we have the sort of five-step process with almost no fee currently, right now. But the fine would change. It would be a warning letter. It'd be 1,000 first time, 1,500 second time, revocation process third time. That's over a 24-month period as opposed to a 12-month period, which is the way that it's kind of set out now. You can be pretty bad in a 12-month period, and just keep being bad in a 12-month period and never really get to the end of the process.
And I would probably say if they were to lose their license, I mean, maybe they can't apply for 24 months or something.
We could add something in there along those lines.
What happened to your three-step process? I thought that sounds like four.
I forgot about the, I mean, I left out the warning piece, and I think, I'm pretty sure we have to have the warning piece in there before we can find them. So if you want to get rid of the, with one of the fine things in short, that's fine.
I'm fine with three.
So, warning, one fine, revocation?
Yeah.
Okay, I got, okay, so we'll do that. What's the one fine? 1,000? 1,500? 1,500?
It all seems high to me, but, I mean, I'll go along with the board here.
I'll see.
1,000, so we're good with 1,000?
Yeah, I liked it the way it was before.
Okay, so, three-step process and a $1,000, the one fine that we issue is 1,000, and then we do...
They don't get fined and then revoked, I mean...
We do the fine, and then we go with the revocation.
Right, but at revocation, they don't get fined as well.
No, they just get their...
Okay.
Punishment enough, because they're not going to be getting revenue from that anymore.
That loss of revenue seems sufficiently harsh.
We good?
Okay.
Okay. Well, man, we're going to get input on all this, so you'll get feedback. And then the last item is the, so if we're going to have grandfathered ones, we're going to have non-conforming ones, and so do we want to do the sunset clause thing? And how do you envision that working? Because right now, our vacation rental licenses renew whenever they renew. They don't renew all in one time. And so as they come up, you'd be like, oh, hey, yours just came up first. You're within 200 feet of that one. You're not compliant.
This seems like a great idea, a great thing to maybe get some feedback at the forum on what the community wants to do.
Okay.
My opinion.
Again, yeah, I feel like I should make a public announcement that we're, you know, we're trying to figure something out here, but we certainly don't have all the answers, but, and clearly, we may have some of the wrong answers right now. But I think we should just impose a term on the existing permits, and maybe it should be five years, I don't know. Maybe it should be two years, maybe it should be three years, but I think, I don't think we should just rely on a natural attrition, because I have a feeling that won't solve the problem or eliminate the sizable number of complaints.
So that's the, so that's the point that I was getting at. So, because they don't all renew at the same time, yours renewed, you just happen to be unlucky enough to have yours renewed before those other folks do, and it goes through that process, and yours expires, right? You could apply for another license right then, but we wouldn't be able to give it to you because you're within 200 feet of another vacation rental.
I think they all sunset at a specific point in the future, and you have reasonable amount of time to make your choices.
So you've got three properties adjacent to each other. Who's going to choose which one is the one that gets the license?
Well, that's what I'm saying, time will do that for you, because the first one that comes up won't be able to renew. And then the next one that comes up, if he's not within 200 feet of somebody else, would be able to go, okay, here, mine's expired, here's my application, and then they would be able to renew. So I'm saying, it's not, it may not be as clean as you might otherwise think.
I think, Michael, you've got a good point. If we get sunset, we date, a date to be determined in the future, a sunset, I mean, at least gives people time to plan. So, I mean, if it's three years, if it's five years, okay, in five years, I'm going to have to have a plan that may or may not include the revenue I may or may not have. I like that idea. I like Michael's idea.
Still, okay, on January 1st of 2025, or whatever it is, that's the sunset clause, you've got seven properties on Beach Comer, and they all come in at 12:01 midnight with their application. How are you going to tell six of those people that they can't, they don't get their application, and how are you going to pick the one that does?
Maybe have some sort of a...
That's why Scott makes the big bucks.
For lack of a better term, if you have some sort of a beauty contest where these people, these people actually actively rented their property for the last, you know, for six months out of 12. These people rented their property 14 days out of 365. I mean, obviously, that would be...
That's why my thoughts are that you grandfather them in the existing, and you use the attrition of non-compliance to weed them out. And then, then as, as the bad actors get weeded out, then they're no longer, they can't reapply within, if they're within 200 feet of the adjacent property. So you use their actions that have, that have consequences.
Here's a thought. If we, in five years, five years from January 1st of this coming year, the 250 people, 250 vacation rentals that generated the most transit TOT get their licenses the others don't. I mean, it's a solution. Might not be perfect, but it is a solution.
But, and these, there was frequent mention of Beach Comer. These expensive and profitable homes, I doubt if the owners are going to endanger their stream of income by not complying and following the rules. They will comply, and the situation will continue. There won't be attrition.
But situations change. People move, you know, people go into old folks' homes, I mean, all kinds of things happen in life, you know.
But that's, but that's still, it's still speculation. I mean, I would, and I would, when there's a valuable asset, people tend not to waste it, and they tend to preserve it, and I think...
Then if they're complying, then they're not a problem, they're not an impact into the neighborhood.
Okay, but then we go back to the notion, there is a diminished quality in the community on those streets, and that's one of the things we were trying to address.
So, I like, I think that term limit of three years, let's say, and the grandfather thing, just the term limit of three years, and then, and then that just kind of keeps it simple.
So we're saying in three years, we're going to have a lottery?
Beauty contest.
Maybe proposal-based.
We do not have the staff to do that. I'll just tell you that right now.
In three years, we...
That would stop all of our applications running through, running through the community.
Again, I mean, forgive me.
We don't have the capacity to take on 300 vacation rentals.
No, I know.
250.
I can't, I can't work my way through all the ramifications, but what is the difficulty in a permit expiring three years after it was granted? And a neighbor may have a similar house who got his permit a few months or a year later, and his will, and so that person whose permit expires goes to the back of the list, and there might be 20 people in front of him.
Just if you've got a 30-year mortgage on a three-year income string.
And my response is, my response is, they bought a, they bought a commercial, they bought a commercial enterprise in a residential area.
But you do have, that is a reality, though.
What about the 80 people that didn't, aren't guaranteed? So the 170 that were already established, the 80 people who aren't, who signed documents that are foreseeably going to have their permit revoked? I mean, if we took those 80 people, those 170s that were already there, grandfather those, and take the other 80 and say, okay, well, now you folks are up at a three-year, at a three-year expiration, and that's just the way it is.
All right, so maybe the problem is that where there's this too high of an existing density, you know, rather than saying, I'm sorry, you made these provisions, and you bought your home with that income stream in mind, et cetera, et cetera, and we're going to cancel your permit, maybe there has to be an accommodation worked out so among those three that are in too dense of an area, there is some sort of sharing of the rental opportunity, parceling it out to them. I don't know, again, I don't know how you would devise that, but maybe there's some solution in that approach.
And this is another...
Chronic fairness issue, and...
You see, once again, we need to incentivize the rental market. We have a problem. So, I don't see, you know, you know, somebody charging $3,000 a week, you know, it's not a hardship. This is, like you stated, it's a commercial enterprise in a residential area, okay? It's not a hardship. It's a, it's like, this was a gift that doesn't last forever, you know? So when I look at it, I don't look at it as like, oh, you're taking something away. No, this is something that you were allowed, and now we can, we as a planning commission, we need to move into, you know, what, as a more, not global, but the bigger issue.
We can reduce the tendencies for those ones. It addresses some of the issue that, not all of it, but it addresses some of the issue that you raised.
Well, what if, again, the deposit, you know, these three houses on Beach Comer, and they're all renting, what if, in an area where there's too great a density, what if we treat that as just one vacation rental conglomerate, and then we, and somehow in a collective way, you have to abide by the rental days and all of that?
Well, I think it's, I think it's, I mean, this is still difficult to regulate, but we can do, do reduced tendency for non-conforming vacation rentals. And so the reduced tendency would just be two tendencies, as an example, we'll cut it in half. Two tendencies over the portion, over a month, and however many days you think is appropriate for that. It's 14 days, it's 10 days, whatever. And so they get a reduced, their use of that is reduced, so you remove some of the issue that you're talking about, is just having a whole bunch of folks constantly in and out of your neighborhood, because those numbers of folks coming and going gets reduced down by some. It doesn't change the overall feel of the neighborhood. You're just going to have that house as vacant more often than not, but, but that would, that would reduce some of that impact. I mean, certainly, and it'd start to address some of the issues that you see there. I mean, is that acceptable? I mean, it's easy enough to write into an ordinance.
As long as we keep the pre-moratorium vacation rentals existing grandfathered.
Well, I'm suggesting that we don't necessarily sunset it, and we just say, the ones that are non-conforming, you get to use them less. And so, you know...
The post-moratorium.
You know, that's, that's not a bad idea, because what it'll do is also, if you do that, it'll incentivize, maybe I should just rent this thing out for now, you know?
Yeah, so I mean, so what do you, I mean, what do you think about that? Does that make sense? Could we do two tendencies for those ones that are non-conforming?
Pre and post-moratorium.
Yeah. And then, number of days? Okay.
I like, I mean, I like, I like where this is going. I like that we're increasing that.
I mean, because it does, because it will disincentivize some of these, and you will get some, a greater amount of turnover of these, then we'll have fewer non-conforming ones, at which point, those other ones, they are able to lask through the process, then could all of a sudden become a full-fledged vacation rental that has all of the privileges available to everybody.
Could you clarify that for me, Scott?
So, we reduce the number of tendencies that you can have for non-conforming ones. They're too close. Is it, this is opposed to pushing the reset button, right? We still may end up there, because we haven't talked to council yet with this, but, but we say, we're going to reduce the tendencies, cut them in half to two, and then we have the, we reduce the total number of days that they could be occupied. What's the... We didn't, we didn't come up with days for, so you want to, we can limit that, we can place a limitation, a number of limitation on that, sorry.
Yeah, I can see that. It would help the areas that are impacted because they're too close.
So is the limitation 10 days?
Yeah.
Does that sound okay?
That sounds...
Because then it becomes a little bit of a disincentive, like that, like we might get some of these to turn over if we're doing that, and then others, you know, that are fine with that would be able to, you know, as those go away, be able to become full-fledged members of the vacation rental community versus the non-conforming ones. Because you can see there's a bunch of non-conforming ones, especially in the areas where we have the biggest concerns noted in the beach track. This would, this would address some of those things. That seem, okay? I got the majority of you nodding your head, so, all right, we'll go with that, and like I said, we'll get feedback. I think with that, we're done with vacation rentals.
Okay, at this point, let's take five minutes for a five-minute break, and be back here at 9:30. We had a extended dialogue here and got through one half of our, of our agendized items, but I think we got...
I wish.
So, you know, we had, we had people that were interested in speaking to the next item on the agenda, and we pretty much wore them out, so I think we will agendize this for the next, you know, item number, let's see, I'm sorry, I lost track here.
We're just going to continue the discussion, and we'll have to see if we can bring it back in the next, I don't know Martha's availability, I haven't spoken about that yet, so it might be the next meeting, it might be a future meeting.
Okay, so, on item C1, we didn't get through the whole, the whole plan there, so we will re-agendize the remaining items on C1 for a future binding commission meeting.
It could be the next one, I just, it's not something we're going to discuss.
So we'll, you know, watch the, you know, watch the Moral Bay website, and then notify me for that item. So then, at this point, we need to go back to, two presentations. We have none. Consent calendar, we have, you know, A1, current advanced planning processing list, staff recommendation, receive and file, and A2, approval of minutes from the planning commission meeting of February 6, 2018, staff recommendations, approve minutes as submitted. So, do we have any issues with the consent calendar? Okay, do I, do we need a, do we need a motion?
You need to adopt them, so, yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I move we accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item B, public hearings, we have none. Item C, we went through before. Oh, I'm sorry. For item B, do you have public comment, or?
I don't really talk about public.
Okay, okay, we're going to, you know, for our audience, benefit of our audience, seeing as we ran late, we're going to re-agendize the other, other issues that we didn't get to, so that we can have, you know, appropriate public comment for them, and appropriate discussion.
Which is the height issue in the downtown, and the remainder of the use items in module three.
So, you know, I want to have proper public comment on them, so, okay. So, so then we have, we come to item D, unfinished business. We have none. And now we're at planning commissioners' comments. Do we have any? Okay, Michael?
I just want to thank everybody who wrote. This was the most communication I think we've had, I've had on any issue in a long time, and it's really important to see the cross-section of people in the city very articulately giving us their opinions, because some of those insights are things that we don't pick up, even with as diverse a group as we have up here with our backgrounds, and it's extremely helpful to get the written comments in advance to see them. And we had some great speaking tonight, it was all very helpful for a tough discussion.
Yeah, I totally agree. I, it's, I'm so proud of our community and just the perspectives that they bring in our, in our dialogue. It's like, whoa, wait a minute, I didn't think of that. The other comment that I would like to make is the draft EIR, water reclamation facility... The other comment that I would like to make is, the draft EIR, water reclamation facility plan, comments are due this Friday, so for people to make sure they put them in, and they have to be addressed to Mr. Leibig, the public works director, and I, I went to the Ocean Protection Council meeting a couple weeks ago, and kind of introduced a different concept with regards to addressing sea level rising climate change, and I'm calling it the WRAP, which is a W-R-A-P, and it's the Waste Water Reclamation Action Plan, and it's based on New York City's Water, Waste Water Resiliency Action Plan, the Waste Water Resiliency Plan that New York adopted after Hurricane Katrina, and if you want to have a copy of it, you could just, just contact, contact me on my website, and I'll forward it to you.
I do have a comment, in particular to the television audience, which is, the only thing I'm certain of that came out of this panel discussion, and in particular, my own comments, is that we need more discussion and more examination of these issues, that it's far from settled in, in my mind.
Justin?
To kind of spin off on that, so just double, triple saying the meeting is going to be June 21st.
June 20th.
June 20th.
And it's, we believe it's going to be in the community center, we're going to have confirmation on that, and once we do have confirmation, I'll put it under hot topics on the city's website, so people can, can get the information there. We should have that nailed down within the next week.
So please come out and give us your opinions again, and I think we have much more to talk about.
Yeah, I will second that, and I think that's a.
And so, and that, and that meeting is hosted by two of our council members, so it's not a planning commission meeting, it's hosted by two of our council members, Heding and McPherson, and I'll be there as well, and certainly, you all are welcome to attend as well.
And it'll be a workshop format?
Kind of a workshop format, we, we need to sit down and go over what it's going to be, but the idea is to not just have the one-way communication, certainly, that's what folks have requested, and I think, especially for this item, I mean, vacation rental is a good idea, so we can have more of a dialogue, I think, and that's, you know, we're going to sit down and talk about how that's going to look, but that's the idea.
Okay, yeah, I think everybody come out for that, give your input, I think that, you know, that's what we need to, to, to see all of the viewpoints, this is not an easy subject, and it's affecting all of the coastal communities in particular, or all of the, and it affects the rental housing market, it affects, you know, you know, the businesses in the area, they benefit, and, and then also, it affects, it affects every community that's in this town. So, this is a tough, tough problem, so, thanks for everybody that did come out tonight and spoke, you know, we need all the, all the viewpoints. Okay, community development directors' comments?
Yeah, I have a question for the commission, if anybody's interested, we, you may or may not be aware, the council authorized us to go out with an RFP, do a fee study for the city, a fee study and cost allocation plan, we've gotten proposals back on that, and I was wondering if there was an interest by anybody on the commission to review the proposals, one of the members. It's being, it's being, it's, it's being processed through our finance department, so, I'm general for Callaway, our finance director.
RFP for what?
But we need some folks to fill the, and we're getting some folks from, you know, at least one person from a couple of the different boards, and I'm on the team, I'll be reviewing them as well, if you're interested, I wouldn't mind.
RFP for what?
It's for a fee study, we're going to do, we're going to look at all of our fees, our impact fees, the fees that we charge in building and planning, and all of those things, fees that are charged, you know, that public works charged all of our impact fees, all of those types of things, and then cost allocation plan, how those are allocated, fees for even harbor department, and we're going to look at, you know, should we be, structure our building permit fees differently, I think we probably should, and so they're going to give us some input on that, and some, you know, look at all the fees that we charge, and are we recouping costs on those things? The city did one many years ago, and unfortunately, when it was done, I don't think that, I don't think staff spent the time necessary to get it all correct, and so we can certainly do a better job than it, I think, so, we're hoping to get, I think we have seven proposals, proposers, I think, so, be a little bit of time involved, and we'd be signing on to review those, wait those, and maybe even interview a couple of the top candidates, so, it's okay, if it's okay if you don't, or don't have time, or are interested, but I'm certainly offering it up if there's anybody that's interested.
It's a short-term thing, right? It's over.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be getting on, since we have them now, we'll be putting the board together, and kind of pulling everybody for available times, and then we'll sit down, get the, rank the applications, and then schedule, you know, within a couple of weeks, interviews for those folks that need to talk.
I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, good, yeah, I would, I just don't have the time, I would, you know, but, the one thing that I know is, the higher the building fees go, the more non-compliance, and the more bootlegged projects that we get, so there's a, there's a correlation between that, and from personal knowledge, you know, you know, we have people turn around and walk out of our, of our store when we say we get permits, because they say, I'm not going to get a permit. So just, that's.
I just, I think it's good to, I mean, I think it's good for, to have one of you, and I appreciate Commissioner Lucas being willing to do that, it's, it's good to have at least one of you looking at it, because this board, you see most of the development applications, and I, and I think that, you know, bringing, you know, that experience to it makes sense. You see the conditioning that we have on all the projects, or in the resolutions, you know, it's, it's good for you to get a feeling for what that is, so, appreciate that.
If Commissioner Lucas's schedule doesn't, doesn't jive, let me know, I'll be, I'll be happy to, if Commissioner Lucas wasn't available.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all, that's my only comments, questions, whatever.
Can I ask you a question, Scott? If I'm not mistaken, the state legislature passed a solar obligation for residential units.
Yes.
2020?
Yeah.
So in the general plan, we'll be not doing a suggest solar, we're going to be anticipating when you do your solar.
We have to update our solar, the solar ordinance that we have, to accommodate the changes, you know, I mean, it's in, it's in the building section of Renegus, because we're the amendment sector.
I understand that it's going to be mandated, and it's a mandatory measure in the 2020 green, is what it's.
But it's pushed down as well, yeah, that's correct. That's not supposed to be pushed down.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, there's, you know, no, no wish list on this one now, which is great. Yeah, okay, the rest of those, the gray water discussion can be added, so, okay, so, so we're adjourning to the community center, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, so if, if you show up here and we're not here, we'll be adjourning to the next regular finding commission meeting at the community center on June 5th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. So, thanks, everybody.